All right, it's after 5:30, we'll go ahead and get started. Have a real call.
Mindy Payne, here. Jonathan Townsend?
Here.
Jay Lee Klimpa?
Here.
Jason Cohen?
Here.
Robert Goransson?
Here. Item number three on the agenda is old business we have done. Item number four consent agenda. Staff want to cover those? Have anything that they wish to pull?
We have no items to pull.
Any questions, have any items they wish to pull? Ready for motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve items four A through C of the consent agenda.
I'll second the motion.
Motion second through the consent agenda. Have a real call vote.
Mindy Payne?
Yes.
Jonathan Townsend?
Yes.
Jay Lee Klimpa?
Yes.
Jason Cohen?
Yes.
Robert Goransson?
Yes. Item number four B on the consent agenda will come back for the city council in this room on 6:30 on September 17. Item number five, we have no items pulled, so item number six, public hearings, we have item six A 24-1126. Staff wish to present that?
Yes, sorry, working on all these papers over here.
You're good.
Only 100 left.
We're not going anywhere for a while.
Okay. This is a public hearing, consideration and possible action regarding PUD 1634 and BAZ 1633 2024. It is a planned unit development and rezoning Oak Crossing 39.56 acres, R2 single-family residential, to RS4 single-family residential located one quarter mile south of Houston Street, which is 81st Street, and east of 23rd Street, 193rd Avenue, County Line Road. This PUD and rezoning request is associated with the potential Oak Crossing development that proposes to create the PUD, oh, which proposes to create a single-family development with a maximum of 155 detached dwelling units on individual lots. Individually, or additionally, the PUD proposes a 10-foot buffer with walking trails along the eastern boundary and multiple reserve areas containing detention ponds and additional walking trails. The proposed development will meet the requirements of RS4 zoning, except where modified by the PUD. Access to 23rd Street and all adjacent stub streets will be required. All potential streets must be constructed to City of Broken Arrow standards. An additional single-family residential driveway will serve the single lot located south of the railroad. So within their PUD request, they are requesting a minimum lot area of 5,000 square feet, the minimum lot frontage of 50 feet, the max height 35 feet with 5 foot max to extend the architectural features. The minimum land area per dwelling will be 7,000 square feet and the maximum lot coverage will be 65%. According to the FEMA maps, none of the property is located within the 100-year floodplain. Water and sanitary sewer are available from the City of Broken Arrow. Per table 4-1 of the comprehensive plan, RS4 zoning with a PUD is considered to be in accordance with the comprehensive plan in Level 2. Based on the comprehensive plan, the location of the property and the surrounding land uses, staff recommends that PUD 1634 2024 and BAZ 1633 2024 be approved subject to the property being platted.
All right, thanks, Chris. Any questions, staff? Any discussion? Is the applicant present? Do you have anything you wish to add?
Good evening. Nicole Watts, Wallace Design Collective, 123 North MLK Junior Boulevard, Tulsa, Oklahoma. Wallace Design is representing Raj Coleman tonight as the applicant for this development. We kind of will have a, I will speak a little bit and then one of the representatives will come up and do a presentation as well. So just let, you know, as a civil engineer, you know, we're here to discuss the land and the property. I know when we were here last time with the zoning, some of the things that was discussed was, you know, the infrastructure, the water, the sewer, the streets and the drainage. We've had conversations with city staff on the water and sewer. City, city staff has determined that there is an issue with the sewer capacity that is associated with the Blue Bell expansion. They are currently in the works of fixing that issue as, pretty much as an emergency project. So by the time this project is developed, designed and construction, that issue will be resolved and there will be sewer capacity for this project when that Blue Bell has been rerouted. So that has come up since the last meeting that we've had discussions. As we know with drainage, we are roughly not allowed to let any more drainage off of our property than what's currently conditioned. So that is why you see all these detention ponds on the property. They will collect it and then they will release the water at or below the existing conditions of it. And then also with traffic, we have gone back with the layouts, have looked at reducing some of the straight streets. We've added some curves, some islands, some traffic calming devices. We have connected to all of the stub streets for the connectivity as city staff has requested just to, so there's not just one focal point just on 193rd Street. Didn't know if you had any other questions for that prior to the developer coming up and discussing?
No, probably thank, something I'd like to mention just in case anybody's out here. This was, this was approved by, they came in through the straight zoning before
Yep.
and it was approved by the plant, or recommended for approval to city council from the planning commission. City council preferred, they denied it, preferred to see a PUD, so
Correct, yes, sir.
That's reason why it's before us. Again, it's here, for anybody interested, it's here for the PUD. So it's a different process for the zoning change, so
Yes.
just want to make sure everybody's understanding that, so. So any questions, applicant? Discussion? Do we have anybody who wish to speak on this? Okay.
But we would still like to do another.
Oh, so you have some, okay.
Yeah, they still have time.
So you were saving your time for me?
I was saving my time. I said it was a two-part.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone. We have a presentation here. I've got a PDF of everything that we printed out, just in case that thing.
We'll need your name for the record, please, too.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Just going to be same things on the overhead? Okay.
My name is Mitchell Reddington. I'm the land development manager here of Raj Coleman Homes here in Tulsa. My address is 3158 South 108th East Avenue, Suite 205, Tulsa, Oklahoma. Getting started on this, you know, we're back in front of you guys with the PUD application, what you just outlined. Talking a little bit about our company, we've been around for over 65 years. We've built over 30,000 homes in seven states. Oklahoma's near and dear to heart here. We've currently got five communities in Broken Arrow. With this one, we're hoping to continue to dig our roots into the city here. Talking a little bit about our process, building-wise, warranty-wise, we do offer what's called a 210 warranty on our homes. That can be broken down into three different categories. First year, from the day that you close on a home, that pretty much covers your veneer. What that means, pretty much we're covering the materials, the workmanship, anything that fails within that first year, we have a builder warranty program that we come back through and we'll fix those things. Two-year warranty, that covers the guts of the home. We've got our electrical, mechanical, plumbing. Anything fails in that first two years, we're coming back out, we're fixing it. Last one, we've got the 10-year warranty, that's really getting down to the bone to the structure of the actual house. So foundation, anything that, of that nature, submit a warranty claim, we're coming back and fixing that. The reason we've got that warranty program with our homes right now, as we have, you know, increasing levels of warranty and complexity on the houses, we increase our warranty to cover all those items. We wouldn't be in business today if we didn't have a warranty program that's like that. We're not in the business to come back and fix our homes, so we really do pride ourselves on building a good quality home, but still offering it at an obtainable price for anybody. Moving forward, this is an avid rating program. This is a national program that rates home builders across the board, east coast to west coast. Majority, if not all, the national builders in the country are being rated by this program. The way that this program is outlined, 30 days after closing, home buyers get sent a survey. It's anonymous. They kind of rate you on salesmanship, craftsmanship, quality, follow-up, all that stuff. So in 10 categories across the board, Raj Coleman is rated number one overall. So with that, we have a 94% rating on our homes from our home buyers. So what that tells us is we really do feel like we're providing a good quality home to all of our homeowners and we're offering it at a, at an obtainable price. So talking about the housing ladder and kind of how we're, we fit into the picture, how we're combating, you know, housing prices, getting out of flux, not being able to afford a home. Where we really fit into that picture is we're kind of capitalizing on that first-time home buyer or that move-down home buyer. So we've got what's created, or we've created what's called a housing ladder, where you really are kind of following the path of homeownership. We all kind of start out either living at home, living in an apartment, moving up. So we're really capturing that first-time home buyer and it's not, you know, it's not only families there. 60, we've got 63% of our homeowners right now do not have children. So we're really capitalizing who's coming into the market, first-time home buyers, allowing them to have that opportunity to step up into a nicer, bigger home as their family grows. As of right now, you know, we really, we do, a lot of our home building is offered to, we've got nurses, policemen, firefighters across the board. We're really targeting that workforce that's coming in buying our homes. We also offer an opportunity for, you know, the empty nesters to downsize into these homes and get into these communities at an affordable price. Moving forward, talking a little bit about the changes on our site plan. So we've, we've made some adjustments. The biggest thing, you know, at city council, we heard a lot of the comments during that meeting back in June and really wanted to take the opportunity to go back to the drawing board, bring this forth, make some changes and really, you know, listen to the feedback that was provided. And we feel like we have a good product to re-present to you guys and hopefully to move forward. With that, we've added nearly half a mile of walking trails throughout our community. We've removed the lots south of the railroad and the lots that back up to the railroad. We've created a green space buffer between the community to the east of us. We've created a green space buffer back to the railroad. We've added ponds, we've added walking trails. We know we'll have to do landscaping along the frontage of County Line Road. We've shifted our entrance into the site to the south. That creates two additional turns to help combat the traffic going all the way through Louisville, connecting to 51 Highway. We've also added a traffic calming device, little island right there before you enter the community to the east with the hopes of combating the speeding, any driving through that community right there. We've added a pond to the northeast side and we're, we know we'll have to add a tree to every single lot per city code. So that's the biggest changes that we've got on this plan. Really tried to take that to heart for what we heard from the council and all the public feedback that we've gotten. So trying to outline that as best as possible. And that's kind of the end of our presentation. If you guys have any questions, comments, concerns?
Now, you, you also did Oak Creek South Phase 3, right?
Correct. So this would be an extension of that community.
Okay. Did y'all do two also? You just did three, right?
Um, I believe we just did three, the very last phase right there.
And that's RS3, if I remember right.
Yep, it's RS3 in that community and we do have a connection right there on that southeast side.
Right, okay.
I, can you remind me again what the average price and square footage is for the homes?
So we kind of build in that $200,000 to $250,000 price range. Average, average home size would be about 1,500 square feet.
Okay. And I was, I was pleased and impressed by the feedback presentation, the feedback portion of the presentation. Can you speak to anything that you guys got in feedback that you just weren't able to meet the community on?
I think for the most part, we were able to take a lot of that feedback, put it in here. I know the city is working on the sewer issue. That was kind of the big one that was out of our hands, but we've followed up regularly with them on trying to figure out what the true issue is. Is it something that we need to address whenever we go develop the community? Or is it something that's kind of on the city side? So working hand-in-hand with them on trying to get that accomplished. I think the biggest one was creating more of that green space throughout the community. The previous application had about six acres of green space. We've increased that to eight acres and added the walking trails. So really trying to get the community aspect of having more walkability,
Right.
having more connectivity throughout the community.
So yeah, so you used the phrase "for the most part" and that's, that's fantastic. I was just curious as to, to that, to that process and wondering if there was anything that perhaps you guys had heard that maybe you wanted to do, I wish you could have done in a better situation, but wasn't able to meet, to meet that particular request.
Sure.
This is, in my opinion, it shows goodwill and good, good intent, I should put.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you for speaking on that. I guess you go detail everything you heard
Yeah.
and put together a list of those requests and those priorities. And for, for the most part, you were able to check most of those things off.
Yeah.
That's good.
Thank you.
So at the top, you have green space. Where can you, like, it just shows two lots at the top of that.
So there's a, there's, it looks to be about a 10-foot strip of green space right there. So it would be dedicated as a landscape easement. You'd be able to pretty much break up the, the
So there's really no, sort of saying, green space, you're just taking part of that lot?
So it's actually pointing to that frontage of the, of the lots where you have the sidewalk and everything. So that connects into the green space reserve area that's going to be to the east of the
There's no green space reserve area on the north side of the property, if that's what you're asking about?
Yeah.
What we're showing is on the east side.
Okay.
We're all the, there's a blue line, there's creek on the east side with existing trees.
Cause it was like pointing down and I'm like
Yeah, no, you're not missing anything. No, we don't have anything on the north. It's on the east and on the south acting as a buffer to the residential, you know, residential subdivision to the east and to the railroad to the south.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the buffer for the railroad?
Mm-hmm.
Can you elaborate, like, go into that? Like, what do you, remind me what you're putting there between that walking trail and the railroad?
So currently, we're showing it's, it's about 40 feet, 30 to 40 feet width. We're putting a walking trail there too and we are discussing putting some trees or, you know, some other, you know, soundingproofing for the homes.
Well, I'm more concerned about children walking that walking trail and walking to that railroad.
Well, I mean, that's something we can definitely look into and take, you know, take that under advisement.
Like maybe a fence or something where
No, yeah, it's a good point.
I could see curious children going, let's go see.
Well, you know, because if you look along the railroad, you know, toward, you know, further to the east, you know, there's houses right up to the railroad. So we're trying to at least provide the buffer. So that is a very good point that we will take it under advisement, absolutely.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Payne, that's something that you could add to the PUD as a requirement if you, if the planning commission so chose?
You had mentioned the warranties, especially the one with the 10-year warranty. Is that transferable from one order to the next?
I believe that covers the house for the first 10 years. So if you were to sell that house within that first 10 years, I believe that would still be covered.
Any discussion with the applicant? I think we've got some other thinking thought. We'll give you a chance to read that here in a second. People open this up to public hearing. We have anybody who wish to speak?
Yes. So I have two stacks of paper. One is everyone who signed up that did not wish to speak, so I will go ahead and read those off. And then I'll call up everybody who did want to speak one at a time, so you can come up and do that. So in opposition that did not wish to speak was Krista Cox, David Woodall, Ariel White, April Jacobic, Lucy Goodwin, Vicky Davis, Donna Brom, Deanna Houston, and Justin Jacobic, and Pat Whittleblock. Sorry if I mispronounced that.
Hold on.
Uh, yeah, hold on, I got another stack. All right, so that was everyone who did not wish to speak. So now I'm going to call up the speakers. I'll go ahead and call one of you up at a time and I'll let you know who's going to be next, that way you can make your way to the front.
Yeah, when you come to the front, just state your name and y'all have three minutes to talk.
Okay, so first up is Stacy Boyd. And on deck will be Neil Henderson.
Thank you all. Thank you for your notification about this meeting. I truly appreciate it. My name is Stacy Boyd. I live at 2728 East Louisville Street. If you reference this nice platted map where Louisville opens into that neighborhood, my house is directly next to Oak Creek. So I see a lot of the water problems that we're having. My house is, is one of the ones that has the raw sewage that we have to go out. When we have stormwater runoff, the force is so great that it backs up into my house. I have to go out, we have to pull out the cleanup cap off and then we have a fountain of sewage in our backyard. All of that is washing directly into Oak Creek. That will go down to the retention pond that's in the south part of the new build. So I appreciate that Raj Coleman has taken the time to go to the city and discuss the sewage problems that we're having. We know that Blue Bell has been part of the issue. And I'm not sure why Blue Bell was allowed to expand before they addressed the sewer line issues that we have in the City of Tulsa. Has this gone online yet? This expansion at Blue Bell?
I don't believe it's online.
Okay, so once it goes online, this problem's going to increase exponentially. And even if there is an emergency plan to do some emergency repairs, which doesn't sound very permanent, to be honest with you, anything that's rushed like this has the potential for problems down the line. But I don't believe that we should be talking about building anything in this 40 acres until we have resolved these issues. And the people who already live in Oak Creek South are no longer having to deal with raw sewage in their homes and in their yards. I think it's irresponsible.
No, and I, and I agree with you on that. And it sounds like, from what I've been hearing, that the city is looking at that and maybe the city wants to talk about that. But they would not issue the permits until that's resolved, because now that, from what I understand, they know the issue. So the city want to cover that?
Yeah, so we actually have Charlie Bright here. He's the Director of Engineering and Construction. I don't want to take your time, but
That's fine.
once you're finished, I'll let him come up and kind of explain what the solution is and what the problems are and kind of address that.
I do have one other thing I'd like to address. The City of Broken Arrow took a green space and made a park out of it several years ago. And this park will be directly where, and you can see where they've put a small island in there. Louisville Street, where it feeds out of the new proposed neighborhood, the park is directly right there. And there is no street parking there and that is right now a dead-end stub street. The kids are used to playing down there. They ride their bikes, they play soccer, they play baseball, all kinds of things. And these children are, for the most part, unsupervised. That is a very dangerous area to have unsupervised children. Also, I'm highly concerned about, I'm looking at this exhibit and I see one entrance into that neighborhood from the east. And I thought in this conversation, they said they had, I guess, moved it a bit south. Is that what it was to try to ease some of the traffic? But at the, at the end of the day, you've got, County Line Road is being expanded to five lanes. And exactly where that entrance is, is where it's going to bottleneck and be down to two lanes. So you're going to see a lot of people that are going to try to get to work and there's going to be a backup and they're going to cut through that neighborhood to try to get on the Broken Arrow Expressway. I mean, it happens every time there's any construction.
All right, Charlie, if you want to come up and
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Charlie Bright. I am the Director of Engineering and Construction for the City of Broken Arrow. Here to talk about in regards to the sanitary sewer issues we've heard addressed. I'll say, as part of the Engineering and Construction Department, I have no opinion on the development or whether it goes forward or not. But I do appreciate the gentleman that showed up to council the last time and actually spoke of this matter. I can't speak for the whole city and say no city people knew about it. I honestly do not know. But when he spoke at that council meeting, that was the first time any of us in leadership understood that this problem was happening. So it immediately raised red flag in my mind, as well as the Director of Utilities and some other individuals. We went and looked at it immediately, because that is a big deal. I apologize to every person in this room who's ever dealt with it. That is a huge deal and the city takes it very seriously. So I'll say regardless whether this development or not happens, we will be fixing that problem. That's uncalled for. It should not be happening. Why it happened and how it's happening, in my mind, I can't, I can't speak factually, because I don't have all the numbers. We haven't ran out of the COWCs, but in general, it is, Blue Bell is, Blue Bell and the manufacturing in the area is reaching capacity at the line, but my understanding is the backfills are only happening when rain events happen. So what's happening is as sanitary sewer lines age over time, you get more of what you call INI, which is infill and infiltration. And so when rain events happening, more rain, as the sewer gets older and older, more rains absorbing and getting into the sewer system. So at one point in time, the Blue Bell system was probably sufficient for that line. But as that system ages, we get more INI in it and now we're getting to the point that it's past capacity. And so you got overflow during rain events. Just as a fact of matter, I believe a peaking factor on a sewer like that as it ages is over 2.0. So what you have, like as normal everyday flow, increases by more than twofold once you have rain events. And so that's why you have overflow during the rain. It's not some emergency fix we're doing. It's not some simple fix we're doing. What we are going to do is completely take that load from Blue Bell off of this line. So there is no emergency, like there will be nothing coming through this neighborhood when we fix it. We'll be taking it to a different line that goes further, trying to make my directions, further south of Blue Bell. There's another line about 700, 800 feet south of it. We have the grades, we can get there. So we're going to do a new connection that gets that industrial area off onto another line that has way more capacity, far less residences on the line. We are talking about an even longer-term plan where we might run a new trunk line down Highway 51. But, so regardless of this development, and I have no opinion on it, but we will fix that issue.
So has there been any impacts on any other development that's out there? Any other subdivisions having issues with that too?
Not that we're aware of. As soon as you get past this neighborhood, you tie into our county line trunk sewer line. And so from what we can tell, it's pressurized just through this line. I believe it's an 8-inch line. I can't remember off the top of my head, but once you get to county line, we're up to like a 36-inch line. There's no capacity issues.
So currently, it's, it's zoned R2 right now, so they can actually build, but they'd have to get the building permits. They'd have to get everything cleared through the city. But I got a feeling that the city would probably not issue the building permits until the sewers are resolved. Is that correct?
That's not.
From the way it sits right now?
That's not my, I don't get final say in that, but I, I think we'd have some discussions and hesitancy. But again, my, just so everybody understands the process, how it works. If we already have easements and everything else, I could probably go build this line in three or four months. The issue is for our fix, we have to acquire one easement from one landowner and that can vary. Some people will give it to me in a month, some people will take me three or four months. And so we're starting that process to acquire that easement. As soon as I have the easement, we're going to do the fix. My best estimate is that within probably a year, it definitely will be fixed, hopefully sooner if I can get the easement faster. I imagine any development that happens here isn't going to have vertical homes in a year. So I think we should have it addressed before any vertical homes would be developed, so.
Is the existing line, taking away from the Blue Bell's impact and its age, going to be able to hold up to a development in this area?
Yeah, absolutely. The, the flow we're talking about from residences is far, far lower than what we're bringing out of Blue Bell today. And the age of the line, we talked about INI and all that. That's normal for a system. It just slowly gets worse as the system ages. Like the system itself is still in okay shape and everything else and eventually it will have to be rehabbed like every other line, but it's okay. It's just as it ages and the INI on top of the Blue Bell situation, we've reached that point where it's over-topping. So we're going to, we're going to address it.
Thank you for the clarity.
Absolutely.
So will the, will, I know a lot of people that live out in that area, Oak Creek South and all that, are not, not at these meetings. So will the city be sending out any kind of notification, letter to let them know what's going on, status on that, or?
I don't know. I, we're still, we're still, we're still in the active planning stages of making sure we have, I mean, I, I know everybody, it's just go fix it, but we're still trying to identify our funding, our land, everything else. As soon as we have a more concrete plan, we'll probably put out some sort of communication.
Okay.
I imagine there probably wouldn't be any individual notification of property owners unless there was a disruption of service of some
Sure.
Yeah, just awareness. I just want to make sure that, I mean, because future developments might come out anywhere else around there that might come up. You know, it'd be nice if they're found, they find out.
Absolutely, noted.
All right, appreciate it.
All right, thank you, guys.
Is somebody else on next?
All right, up next was Neil Henderson and then after that, we'll have Bonnie Straw. Oh, you didn't want to speak? Okay, sorry. All right, Bonnie?
And after, after Bonnie?
Sorry, after Bonnie will be Sean Parrish.
Hi, thanks for your time. I just moved to Oak Creek South, not even a year ago, last October, so
Can you state your name, please, in the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry, Bonnie Straw. Bonnie Straw, 1209 Bonnie Straw, twelve oh nine South Thirty. Um, but I feel like my concerns are with the first woman that spoke. And I can imagine how some of the residents that have been there, um, since this neighborhood has been there since the seventies. I feel my main concern is that park and the children. And the one exit out and that eighty-first and one hundred ninety-third already have so much traffic. Our neighborhood already has so much traffic. I live in the middle of the neighborhood, and there's too much traffic already. So, the safety concern, um, the amount of people that's going to put in the neighborhood, uh, connected to us, and only having that one exit out is my main concern. Um, the sewage as well, which I could smell today. I'm not sure why. Um, you know, that's definitely an issue. Um, and then also with the new amphitheater that's going to be built, I know a lot of people do not want to take the turnpike. They're going to be heading back towards Broken Arrow Expressway, which is going to put more traffic, I feel like, on, uh, the main streets there at that intersection. And you're going to have the people trying to go to QuickTrip and in and out, and just using the neighborhood to zigzag through on top of that. So, having another access point from one hundred ninety-third to the neighborhood, I don't feel like is a good idea.
But when, when you moved in the neighborhood, you saw the stub street, knowing that there might be some kind of development going to go on the west end of the neighborhood, right?
It was a dead end, where the park is, is a dead end.
But it's a stub street, right?
It is like a, there is like a stub there, yeah.
Next to the Oak Creek Park right there.
But it was all wooded behind there. So, I guess that, I, it didn't really cross my mind that a neighborhood would go in there. I thought, oh, wow, this is a cute little neighborhood with a safe park on a dead end street. Um, so, that's, yeah. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, up next is Sean Parrish. And next on deck would be Lori Hendrix. Uh, Lori Hendrix, sorry.
All right, my name is Sean Parrish. I live at twenty-six nineteen East Knoxville Street. Um, you know, I can, I can stress again the traffic concerns. Uh, one hundred and fifty-five lots, he said? That's a, just over three hundred cars going back into our neighborhood and not out county line right there. That's three hundred added vehicles plus into an overcrowded neighborhood with traffic coming in off of Highway fifty-one, cut, trying to cut the intersection at eighty-first and Highway fifty-one. You have an overcrowding issue at Broken Arrow Public Schools currently. Where, out of these one hundred and fifty-five houses, uh, you're, you're pushing more, even more kids into the school district. That's a lot of children. Rhodes, uh, Sequoia, I, there, those schools are at more than capacity in several instances. I had a teacher tell me, uh, I forget the exact number she's capped at, but she is over capacity in special ed children in her classroom right now. And now, you want, Roush Coleman wants to come in and add all these extra homes. And I don't think anybody besides a couple of us realize, do you know the current speed of that railroad? Twenty-five miles an hour. Do you know what it's going to be after the twenty-sixth of this month? Forty. Forty miles an hour. I live at, up on Knoxville Street, and when that train comes rolling through, I can feel it in the ground at my house at twenty-five. Now, it's going to be at forty. So, how do you think these people in these houses, especially in phase two or three, or whatever it's called, are going to feel in their foundations? I mean, Broken Arrow's kind of a sandy soil situation, and you have a lot of people that have to have, uh, different types of retention systems to keep their slabs from constantly shifting. Part of that is on contractors from adding too much water to concrete. I drove a cement mixer for over seven years. I've seen these home builders and the amount of water they add to these slabs. They take a three thousand PSI rated slab and add a hundred gallons of water, especially during the summer, which reduces the PSI strength of that slab probably down to two thousand PSI. So, I know this is a zoning board meeting, and I know that you guys don't really control this. But if this does go through, I really advise the city to have a concrete inspector at every single house built in the city. Thank you.
All right, next up Lori Hendrix, and on deck is Catherine Church.
Thank you, my name's Lori Hendrix. I live at thirty oh five East Indianola Street. I have read the PUD that, uh, has been proposed online. One of the things that is stated in this PUD that it will have two access points off of one hundred ninety-third. I don't see that on this map. If this, uh, save for the two entrances into our current neighborhood, uh, if this were under Wagner County Planning and Zoning, would not qualify to be approved by this board, because it would be required to have two exits. It does not have two exits. So, they're deliberately pushing traffic back into the neighborhood that is already overcrowded with traffic. People tend to go down Louisville to Thirty First Street. I live on the first entrance, the first cul-de-sac off of eighty-first Street. And some mornings, it's almost impossible to get out. This will exacerbate that problem. I'm also noticing that there is no stub street on this development to the north. Currently, the, the parcel to the north is zoned agriculture, but a reasonable person would anticipate that it will also be zoned residential eventually. Uh, but again, there's no relief for the traffic from this particular development, even planned for future development. Um, it just creates a problem that is even worse. We just heard the engineer state that the sewer is already past capacity. That is his quote. If you look at the PUD, this property naturally drains to the south and to the east. We have sewer problems when it rains. Additional development is going to create additional stormwater runoff, and it again, is going to exacerbate the problem. This property is already zoned residential. They do not need to have a planned unit development, which a planned unit development, for those in the room who don't know what that means, that means that the developer is permitted to put the same number of houses in that district, and it counts for them to have a smaller lot than would normally be permitted in order to ha, to accommodate for the infrastructure, the streets, the walking trails, the ponds, et cetera. So, there's going to be the same number of houses. It's already, it's already zoned residential. They can develop it now with not as many houses. We do not need twenty percent more houses there.
All right, um, last up is Catherine Church. And I do want to say to the Planning Commission, to Ms. Hendrix's point, I did just read that section of the PUD, and that will need to be amended. It does say two access points, and there is only one shown.
Hi, thank y'all for having us this evening. My name's Catherine Church. I live at thirteen hundred South Twenty-Eighth Street in Broken Arrow. My house is one of the ones that's on the creek that butts up against to this new addition. When we moved there in eighty-nine, we could actually drive a riding lawnmower across that creek. Over the years, it has eroded enough just on its own that now we would, we can't cross it without some kind of a bridge. That land there is sloping to that. I know they've got retention ponds, but that's going to all come down to the creek. I know the Wallace said that this plat doesn't include the creek. It does not, it's in my backyard and a lot of these people's backyards. Um, our land is going to be eroded faster and deeper than it is now. I'd also like to talk about, uh, the crime possibility. We already have crime. Having that many more houses is going to create more in our neighborhood. And I don't know if we can handle that, or what we're going to do to make sure that doesn't happen, or to alleviate some of it. Is there going to be anything to divide that to our addition? The way our land slopes, all of those houses will look directly into the backs of our houses. There's no tree tall enough, there's no fence tall enough. It's pretty much, you know, whatever we do in our backyard or in our house, they'll be able to just watch it like a TV show. I don't know, um, if there has been a study for Louisville to encompass this many more cars, over three hundred cars a day, buses, everything else that goes along with it. Do we have a study that says that that, the concrete, this state of the concrete right now of Louisville can handle that? Is it going to deteriorate really fast? What's going to happen? Who's going to pay for that? Are we going to be driving into the addition that we're used to driving in on a street that's all broken up? Is that going to lower our, lower our property values? Are these houses going to stay, you know? Is it, is it an addition that could possibly lower our property ma, values? With it causing all the problems? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Catherine.
That's all I have. Did any, I've got about a million papers up here, so did someone turn in to speak?
I did, but I wrote the wrong PUD thing.
Okay, if you, if you want to go ahead and come up, um...
Come to the front and give us your name, and we'll look for it.
I don't doubt that I put something in the wrong pile, so please bear with me.
Well, I think I wrote the wrong thing, so, maybe that's...
That's okay.
Yeah, we'll find it.
I'll find it.
We got the paperwork, we just need to make sure it's right.
My name is Catherine Combs. I live at thirty-one hundred East Louisville. I think I see my house on that map. You guys, please don't. Okay, it, the traffic is bad enough. I live right at the corner of that entrance. I'm scared for my own safety going to the car at night. There's no safe place to park. Okay, I live at both of those entrances, because I'm the corner. This is bad. I have kids, I have grandkids. There are kids across the street, there are kids next door, there are children everywhere. I don't want to hear, well, we might and should and maybe. I want solid facts. This is what we're going to do, and this is how many more entrances and exits we're going to put there. That's a safety issue in and of itself. Not to mention the sewage issue, holy cow. And my property butts up to, uh, a company that I'm having problems with that say, no, it's the city's issue. No, it's the business's issue. And so, whatever retaining wall, wherever, I don't understand the, the north, south, east, and west of it. But I do understand the practical humanity of this situation. We are at max capacity. Our schools are at max capacity. I had to walk out and use the restroom when I think another teacher was talking. I taught in the district. I taught in one of those, uh, special ed classrooms, where I was only supposed to have ten kids, and I had sixteen. This is serious, and we need to really think about this before we approve this. This is about our kids and our futures. Okay, not just pocketbooks and building more people, building more houses. We have to fix the problems that exist now. Whew, I'm passionate, can you tell?
That's all right.
Right, also, also, I love Barbie, in case you didn't notice. Barbie, okay, thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right.
That's it?
Anybody else I missed? Did you sign up ahead of time?
Did you sign up to talk?
Okay. Joe Cannon.
Hold on, we'll look for it.
Yep, got you.
We probably had you in a different stack, so come to the front. We'll give you three minutes to talk.
It says six B, but I'll change it to six A.
Is that the last one that signed to speak for this item? Okay.
Well, I signed it, but I said I didn't want to speak, but I just have one quick...
Well, no ma'am, he's coming up to talk right now.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, everybody here...
We'll need your name for the record.
Pardon, my name's Joe Cannon, and I live at twenty-six fifteen East Knoxville, which is the, uh, north-east corner of this property that we're talking about, that butts up to the forty acres that's not being developed. And everybody here has just pretty much said everything that I wanted to say. But, you know, they built a new bridge on county line. They built a new road there. And all that water that's coming out of the addition, the old addition, is now coming down into, into eighty-first Street. And they got, uh, you know, like, a, probably a four-foot aqueduct that goes underneath eighty-first Street. And then another hundred yards, they got another one. And then, after that, it all ends. They haven't, I mean, it's just all built up, growed up, like it was when they started. So, there's going to be so much stormwater coming down from that area right there that it's going to do some damage, plus the fact that, I know it has to be engineered, but in order to, for that forty acres to be, I mean, they got like five retention ponds in there that they put in there. They know there's going to be a problem with, with stormwater. You know, let, let alone the sewer, the electric, the water, all the other infrastructure processes. So, that's just another thing to think about, is when this addition is complete, where's all the water that's in this forty acres right now being absorbed by the forest? It's actually a forest. I mean, the other day, I heard three coyotes yelp over there, and I could hear them. They were just right there by the dag gum property. I've seen deer in there, you know? So, I think the stormwater is a process that needs to be looked at. You know, to where the catch basins are? Are they all going to run out to Louisville? You know, where are they going? They're all going to go to the retention pond, what happens when it's full? So, I think stormwater is, is a certain issue that needs to be approached.
Well, you know, and that, that is what engineering, that's what they'll do. Of course, we're, tonight, we're talking about the PUD, zoning change. But, but they, they have the four detention sites on here to collect the runoff that's coming off the site once it's built. So, that is, it's going, they're going to capture that runoff and hold it back. So, it's not, it's actually going to be better than what it is. But it should be better than what it is, what, the way they're designing it, to capture that runoff, so they can't increase runoff to anybody downstream or upstream of you.
Well, you know, you got the railroad track right there.
I understand.
So, it's not going to go underneath that. There's one spot that it goes underneath between the concrete plant, where that water will go underneath that track. But, they're not going to bore a hole through that railroad track, you know? So, I think that's an issue. I know it don't have anything to do with the, the commission and the planning.
No, but it's a concern, and we'll let the applicant address that.
But, it's something that needs to be addressed, whatever you guys do.
I understand, yep. Because he, like, she said a minute ago, it's currently zoned for residential anyway. For R two, different type, uh, sized lots.
Right.
So, it would have to be addressed then, too. So, no matter what, when they build something out there, it's going to have to be addressed.
I think there will be like five acre lots with the, you know, a giant, with, with like ten real nice big houses there. And I think everything will work out fine.
But you know what some people would say? Why would I build a big old lot next to a railway?
Well, that's what the other people are saying about the little houses.
And, okay.
All right, thanks.
So, is there anybody else? I guess that's it. So, I'll close the public hearing, so I guess I'll let the applicant come in.
Can I?
Before the applicant comes up... Oh, I forgot about you, I'm sorry. So, you didn't sign up?
I signed the paper, but I just said that I didn't want to speak, but I signed it.
Then you'll need to come to the microphone.
He just said something.
Because you have to sign in advance before we let you speak, so...
Oh, I see, I see.
So, you couldn't resist, you wanted to talk to us, huh?
Well, actually, hi, Krista Cox. I live at sixteen thirty-six South Thirty-First Court. So, I'm actually, one of the new houses, was built by Phase Three, Roush Coleman. Um, he said earlier, when he was talking to you guys, that sixty-five percent of his current home buyers... Texting and driving is an issue, so I just think we should really think about the traffic, like, the traffic is the biggest thing coming through these, young people drive fast. And so, I just want to point out that he makes it seem like it's a good thing to have young, first-time homebuyers coming through, but to us, with all the kids, we don't feel that way. The larger lot is a better idea. If it has to happen, it should be fewer homes. That's all I'm trying to say. Thank you.
Did you sign up?
Yeah.
Man, everybody signed up somewhere.
Not this week, but I have one.
Well, you're going to have to come with microphones, so. Is anybody else that signed up that did not want to talk that wants to talk tonight? Okay, so this will be the last one.
Once the, once the public hearing's closed, there'll be no more comments, so just.
I'll let the applicant talk after this.
My name's Vicki Davis. I live at twelve twelve South Thirty-first Street. I bought my home back in March twenty eighteen. No idea that there was going to be additions. It was quiet, beautiful. They started building the addition. The roads started breaking up. They are crumbling. We've heard that Roche Coleman was going to fix the roads whenever he was through with construction. That's just hearsay for me. I live on Thirty-first, on, after the little niche out. The people fly. They go down that road at least forty miles an hour. One year after living there, a little boy got hit by a car, broke his leg. Kids try to ride their bikes, they always go in the street. I've called asking for speed bumps. I was told I would need to go door to door. I can't do that because I'm going to make enemies with everybody, because if they don't want it, then they'll put it in, and then somebody will say no, and they'll take it out. So, I thought, I'm new, I don't want to cause problems. This new addition, I'm with everybody. It's not going to work. It feeds back into us. Two exits out, that's great, onto Hundred Ninety-third. Going back into the south part, that's just going to give the people that live down there a cut through to Hundred Ninety-third, from Hundred Ninety-third all the way to Highway fifty-one. We only have two exits that are good for us, out onto eighty-first. If we want to go to Quita, you can safely get past, get onto fifty-one. If you have to go back to Broken Arrow, you're taking a chance. And I just pray that you all will consider everything that you've heard tonight, because it's, it's my lifetime investment, and I feel that most everyone in here, it's their lifetime investments, and we need some peace back in this neighborhood. Thank you.
I would, I would like to say, go ahead, you're, I would like to say that when you see the, the connectivity, the tie-in between the new subdivision and the existing subdivision, that's a requirement that was put in in our zoning ordinance, so that's why the developer said, hey, we need to put that in, and they worked staff. So, that's where you see that. So, I don't want you to hold it against the applicant or the developer, because that's what, they are going by in accordance with what our requirements are. Now, I did, there was talk about the curb cut that's going to be on the, off Hundred Ninety-third, there was talk about two of them. I think the one, the one I read, and when this came back the first time for straight zoning, and it was denied by the city council, there was also a development that was going to be on the south side of the railroad tracks, and so that had a curb cut there. So, when I read it, I assumed it's still the P U D over the, over all lot, and I assumed that was that south, the curb cut south of the railroad tracks. And I'll give a chance for the applicant to talk to that. So, it's going to be up to staff, if this is approved tonight, whether they want to amend that, change it or not, but it is in there. And I, I don't know if that really matters, that it's in there, so.
It does still show it.
Yeah.
On the drawing, you can see it.
You can see it on the drawing, if you zoom in a little bit.
But, I don't think that it's meant to be there.
Yeah.
I think that's a leftover.
But I'll let applicant talk about that.
Yep.
So, the antennas leave there, so that's, that's where the two curb cuts were, going on Hundred Ninety-third. I, let's see.
What's a curb cut?
Well, just the entrance and the exit to the, I call it a curb cut, just the entrance and exit going from Hundred Ninety-third on the county line into the housing addition. So, right now, you see one that's north of the railroad tracks, a few hundred feet, and then you also have, if you see right there where the cursor is, that was the other one. That was when they came in for straight zoning, but when they came in for the straight zoning to us, before, when city council, we did not see any conceptual layout. But when I watched the council meeting, I watched council meetings, so when I watched council meetings, they submitted a preliminary conceptual layout to the city council, and that was on there, if I remember right.
I'm sorry, the public hearing's closed.
Yeah. So, I'm just trying to point out that's where that other curb cut or the street, the access to the housing dish was going to be.
Yes.
But, but you were.
There was actually, ma'am, there was actually going to be a housing, some houses down on the south end. I'll give a chance for the applicant to come up and talk about that.
So, I, I can see where that wording was left in because of the previous, but I do agree, it needs to be changed to reflect this conceptual plan.
Okay, so go ahead and call.
So, did you want to go ahead and come up and talk?
Sure.
Give you a chance to rebut whatever said.
Sure.
So, yeah, so, talking about the two access points, we did leave the two access points in there just because we're still planning on the south side of the railroad to have one lot, so the thought was one driveway for that lot. If we, if we don't need to have, you know, if we want to reword it or say it's something different in the P U D, we can, but that was the intention, was one acc, you know, one access point on the north side for the subdivision, and then one driveway on the south for that one lot on the south side for it. So, I mean, if we need to re, look at rewording or whatever like that, we can definitely do that. You know, discussing about the traffic and the speeds, you know, that was one of the things why, you know, we put some of the traffic calming, traffic calming, you know, in the northeast corner where we entered the subdivision to the east, you know, that, you know, wide and outputting an island, that does force everybody to slow down in and out. And then with the curves and everything like that on the streets, that is part of the design criteria as well as a, you know, as a natural traffic calming event. You know, per the International Fire Code, you're required to have a minimum of two access points for a subdivision, and they can't be on the same side of a property, on the, you know, so thirty or plus lots, you're required to have two or more access points, and they have to be, you know, triangle from each other. So, the point of having one on, you know, on the northwest corner and then connecting on the southeast corner where there's an existing stub, and in the northeast where there is an existing stub, that meets, meets the International Fire Code for access for these subdivisions. As stated, these stubs were designed by the city in previous years for connectivity. It does provide access to the east, but it also provides an access point for these existing residents who don't want to go to the east to exit out. They have an access point to get to the, you know, to the west and get out as well. I know we've talked about San Terre Seer, like, as we discussed, there's not going to be houses vertical for two years from start to finish. So, if the city has stated that within a year, the sewer should be fixed, we still will have another year of construction and development before there are rooftops that are flushing toilets on this piece of property. Stormwater, the reason why there's so many ponds is, you've got to look at all the little drainage basins on a piece of property, and how the property falls and drains on this property. It kind of sheds in different areas, and that's why we have so many detention ponds, is to show that we're not increasing any runoff from any point from that, and that will be required to be designed by a professional engineer, reviewed by the city before it's, you know, constructed. We also have, are in agreement to put a fence on the, on the south side along the railroad. We are in agreement to add that into the P U D requirements to, for the safety of it. I think that was a very good idea, and we will definitely do that. Here, if you have any other questions.
Well, you know, any questions, applicant?
No.
Well, you know, one of the things that was mentioned, thanks, and one of the things that was mentioned was about building next to the railway. We just approved of one, city council approved one just the other night for, I think it was called Twin Oaks. And that's, that's actually southeast, just down the railroad track southeast. It's a development that's going to get off Washington Street, which actually would take you, it would, it's near the Washington, it's right next to Washington, next to the railroad tracks, and it actually would take you to county line also, so there would be access that development would be getting on there. And it's an RS four also, if I remember correctly, the same as what they're asking here. And it also would take you down to University Drive towards New Orleans Street, too. So, we have one that we just approved, or the city council just approved, and that is next to the railway there. I think it has a hundred and fifty foot right away there instead of a hundred feet, if I'm remembering right, but it's the same thing the houses are backing up to on the north side of that addition. So, we have that there. But what I was curious about, and you might want to come back up on this one, so, I actually didn't want to dismiss you just yet, but anyhow, so, in, in the one that we approved there, we've kind of been doing that with the RS four, we've been requiring more than the ten-foot landscape buffer, and I know council's looking at, hey, you know, instead of straight zoning, the P U D, like, what can the city get back from it, what can the neighbors get back from it?
Sure.
There, we put fifty-foot landscape buffers on both the RS four that went to Twin Oaks or what, Three Oaks, whatever it's called.
Three Oaks.
Three Oaks, anyway, on south, just down railroad tracks. And we also did another one at the, off Tucson Street, I think we had the fifty, fifty-foot. Did, so, did you all work with the applicant on that at all?
Those are P U D's planned unit developments. That was at the suggestion of staff, but ultimately is the applicant's decision whether to put in fifty, ten, it's their decision. In this case, they've gone with ten feet. This is a little bit more constrained site, different kind of product than what's the other, every development's different, so you, it's hard to say a one-size-fits-all, but as of right now, our code does not require any landscape buffer between the two.
And something we had also done in the past, if we didn't do that, we've done, this goes back a little bit, but we've also, where instead of having just RS three or RS four on one side, we've actually had like a RS three, you know, we, we've actually had less dents where it's abutted next to the neighbors. Have we thought, talked about that at all on this one, too?
We've not had that conversation.
Would that be something that we would be interested in? I'm just curious.
That would be up to the applicant. So, our thinking along the east side, when you look at the neighbors, yes, no, west side, not, but to that, there is a, a large overland drainage easement that abuts our east property line. That's a blue line stream that's in an overland drainage easement, so that really provides a very large natural buffer. In our opinion, is not going to go away, and so it kind of provides that buffer that you're kind of thinking about and talking about. You know, that's why we are only providing a ten-foot on the east side, to try to keep some of those trees, provide a walking trail, provide a little bit of buffer, but knowing that there is a very large natural buffer to the east of our property already.
And if we required a fifty-foot, you just wouldn't be able to house over there because you wouldn't have the room, you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have the depth.
Correct.
So.
Correct, but that, that was our thinking along the east side when we were looking at all the surroundings was, there was already a very large natural buffer to the east. Again, it's, it's a blue line jurisdictional stream in an overland drainage easement that will not be very hard to get rid of.
You know, we, I understand the, the concerns about the tie-in, the connectivity, which, like I said, that's, that's, that's a requirement. There are things the city council can do to change that, but there is the requirements for that, and we look at traffic calming measures.
Right.
You put the traffic island in there, it'll help slow down, reduce the track, the speed a little bit. But we do have a lot of streets in Broken Arrow that are half a mile, three-quarters to a mile long, they're going to housing additions. I could think of Boston, I think it's Ithaca or Utica, whatever, there's a bunch of them out there that do that, but I understand their concerns, too. But it also makes me think of where the people that are list, living in the east side right now, the bigger additions right now, are they going to come through this new addition to Hundred Ninety-third? But also, are these people going to go to Fifty-One Highway? It almost seemed like there's some relief that, you know, we're taking people.
Right.
Because city Broken Arrow does not have many residential neighborhoods that tie into a Highway Fifty-One like it does in that area right there. I think there's only maybe three that tie in directly like that, and I know ODOT's probably not big on that anyway. So, if you can relieve the traffic and bring it back to county line a little bit, I'm not saying all of it, that would help there, but then again, that puts a burden on the city controlling that traffic, too, to handle that traffic, so.
Right, and I, I know it was stated, you know, again, you can't control all the traffic. You can try to design as best as you can and give as much, you know, points as access, but, you know, when you look at the traffic from the subdivision, and I know it was stated, I don't believe it's all going to be going to the east. I mean, I think people are going to find the best route of how it goes, and, and you know, and that's just part of planning and going through that way.
Oh, come on now, they didn't make noise when you were talking, so let her be. Thanks.
So, you know, so again, you know, we are willing, you know, to look at and working with city staff if we believe that, you know, speed humps need to be put in at a few places just for some more traffic calming. We don't have an issue with doing that as well.
Well, and there are, if I remember right, there are, I think, four speed humps in that addition that are out there right now, I think, on two different streets, one out towards Houston Street, if I remember right. I think that's right.
I'm not quite sure, yeah.
So, I would imagine they are, and, and I don't know if that's something that we need to put in there, but the, the city staff, the engineering department, whatever, get together, and they, I guess there's different measures on traffic control measures they take, not traffic control device, but traffic control, controlled measure, including the landscape islands, the speed humps, you know, signs, signage, stuff like that.
Right, I mean, you're only allowed to have a straight street for, is it nine hundred feet?
Nine hundred feet, yes.
Max, maximum, you know.
But that's not a collector.
No, that's just on a, on a street, you know, before you have to have some sort of curve, you know, island or something, some sort of traffic, so that is in the design criteria that we will be required to design, you know, adhere to.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, there's other things you could do, curve extensions, chicanes, all kinds of stuff like that, so, but I don't know what all the city would be willing to look at, but.
Yeah, so mostly, with the engineer will, if we look at nine hundred-foot rule, it will look at, say, you need to have some sort of curve in there to slow things down, an island or something like that, divert traffic, that causes a visual impairment to speeding and causes people concerned to slow down. I do also want to point out to everybody that eighty-first Street from Lynn Lane to county line to the highway is going to be five lanes in both direct, well, five lanes period, of traffic capacity when the, the construction is done. The next step is going to be going from county line to, to the highway to get that done to five lanes, as we've worked through some stuff with the core to go from Lynn Lane to, to county line.
And they just announced that last week, that they were going to do that, right, on Houston, from Lynn Lane to the Fifty-One Highway there?
Yep.
So, when actually will that start?
The portion, the mile portion from Lynn Lane to county line is still under design. We had an update from Kenny within like the last year, so that says that he expects that to be under construction next year. The portion on eighty-first Street from Lynn Lane to the highway, as soon as we wrap up construction on the bridge and that road expansion, that's the next step, and that could be later on this year or early next year.
Mr. Bright, did you have anything you wish to add to on that?
Oh, yeah, my phone's handling it.
You'll need to come up here so we can get you on.
Can I sit down?
Yes.
Okay, for now.
Until we call you back up.
No, I think Jason did an excellent job, most, pretty accurate. Council recently divided that into two projects. I don't know if all the citizens in the crowd know, but the bond in twenty eighteen passed, which was to widen eighty-first Street, you know, Houston Street from Lynn Lane all the way to Highway Fifty-One. The council recently approved us breaking that into two projects, because, as you all probably know, from eighty-first Lynn Lane to county line, what Jason was just referencing, there's a lot of issues with the creek being up against the roadway, and the core considers, believe it or not, the core considers that a navigable creek.
Yeah.
It is dry, there is no water in it, but the core calls it navigable, and so that makes the design very challenging. So, we're having a lot of troubles between Lynn Lane and county lines. We broke it out. You will have construction probably starting, I would guess, sometime next year on county line to Highway Fifty-One. We'd probably be a year or so behind that for Lynn Lane to county line. We just got to get through the core issues, so. Happy to answer any other questions.
One other question on county line, do you have anything you can add on the county line?
You will have construction probably starting, I would guess, sometime next year on county line to Highway 51. We'd probably be a year or so behind that for Lynn Lane to county line. We just got to get through the core issues. So happy to answer any other questions.
One other question on county line, do you have anything you can add on the county line?
Um, well, obviously, the ongoing construction is redoing the intersection at eighty-first and county line itself. There are currently no plans for eighty-first to, eighty-first down to ninety-first. A lot of that's wetlands and core regulated areas, so there's, it's anticipated that not a whole lot of future development happens on that part of the county line, county line. But there is a project to improve the intersection. It's a future project. I wouldn't expect it super, really soon, but there is a future project to improve the intersection once you go further down at ninety-first and county line. So a lot of, all the intersections will be improved over time, but there is no current plan to widen from eighty-first to ninety-first.
All right, thanks. Any other question for the applicant?
Yes, I, it's not, it's not an engineering or a traffic question, which I know is, most folks are really most interested in, but I really wanted to hear from the applicant one more time just about the, and this is being proposed as a fix to a need, and that is for housing for a particular, folks who make a particular amount of money or might, we talked about earlier, maybe police officers or nurses or people maybe trying to find their first home. I wanted to hear a little bit about the research that went into that to just talk a little bit more about the need as far as, you know, the amounts of people that we might have in Broken Arrow that this might be an answered prayer for.
Sure. So we've got some Broken Arrow specific statistics. I don't have them included in my slides, but kind of talking about the demographics that we're targeting as far as who's buying our homes, the median household income. So right now, you know, our age range is right in that average of about thirty-seven years old. Our average median household income is right around that $90,000 range. So that's kind of our workforce entry level professionals. Like I said before, you had asked what the range of homes that we're kind of building in, it's that 200,000, 250,000 median right there is going to be 225, but on average, we're building 1,500 square foot homes, offer six to eight different variety of homes in that community. So a lot of that workforce housing does come from the nurses, the teachers, the firemen, the policemen, myself. I live in a Roush Coleman home. I worked for Roush Coleman. I worked for him for five years, so I have two small kids. You know, it's, I don't fit in the demographic of having a family that lives in that community, but Roush Coleman has afforded me the opportunity to have a new home as a young professional.
That's great. And were you all able to, or were we able to on the city side? Are we able to like pinpoint, like we have, maybe not pinpoint, but identify a significant amount of people that will be likely prospective homeowners for, are interested in this particular project or a project like it?
Yeah, I think you're always going to have that, that target market that's in an apartment or, you know.
Okay.
Fresh out of college, looking for a new home. And what we're trying to do is offer that opportunity for those people to stay in Broken Arrow, not move out and commute back in. So it's keeping that, those local professionals local to Broken Arrow.
Thank you for that information.
Yep.
Appreciate that.
Well, that's interesting, because one thing that, you know, I hear about is teachers moving into starter homes like that, too. And you didn't mention that, but that's what I've been told. So one of the things that was brought up, and I don't know where Mr. Parrish, I think you brought up about the students, overpopulation of the schools. We hear that quite a bit, and that happens. The city, I moved here in 1970, the population was 11,000, and yeah, I was in one of those top, one of those little prefab buildings or whatever. But it happens, Broken Arrow continues to develop and the schools have to get bigger, too, to keep up, and that, and that happens. And so also, you also got to remember the housing additions, you know, they're not going to have a ten-year-old kid living in that house forever or something, you know, that kid, he grades out basically, moves on, moves on, and so that, they may not have that kid in there anymore, moved on to high school, whatever. So then you have other schools, if that makes sense, other students coming in and other housing additions. Does that make sense? I don't know if I said that right, but probably didn't say it right, but anyway. It's not, but not that you're continuously adding to the school. I mean, the kids are moving on, going to other grades, too, so.
And the school.
That's true, but not always. I mean, that's true.
And the school passed a bond issue that they are building on to a lot of the elementary schools. Our schools are amazing. Broken Arrow schools are amazing. Our superintendent graduated from Broken Arrow. He takes care of Broken Arrow. And when we, you know, the housings grow, the schools grow. So, and I like the price range of this. Like the kids graduating college, you know, I want my kid to come back here. I don't want him to go off someplace else, you know? So I like the price range of these.
Well, you know, one of the biggest, one of the biggest concerns we had was the sewage, and I'm glad to hear that the city's working on that. Sounds like they're going to get that resolved before any, any house is ever built out there to prove. You got to remember, it's R2 right now, which would mean larger lots, less number of lots out there. But you would still have it, and if they came before the planning commission as an R2 development, they would still have to abide with the regulations, you know, the local, state, and federal regs, including our subdivision regs and stuff that require the tie-in or the connectivity right there. Now, the council has a way to work that differently than we do, but I guess we could, but we have something on the agenda later. But there, to follow the requirements is to put that connectivity in there right now. And they did put a traffic island in there to decrease the speed of it. There may be something down the road that the city has to look at, another calming device or calming measure inside Oak Creek or something, another speed hump. I'm not sure about that. But the stub street was there, and so we knew in the comprehensive plan that there's going to be a development going through there sooner or later. And I'm sure most of you knew that when you moved in there, when you saw the stub street, so.
All right. Yeah, so the public hearing's closed, I'm sorry. Okay, so from staff's view, I've been taking notes here of everything that people have brought up. I do have a few recommendations for a motion if you guys were inclined. There were three things that really came up, so, and I can read this as a motion later if you want, but one was a fence being required along the south boundary, abutting the railroad right of way. I think the applicant has already agreed to add that language to the PUD. Second, clarifying the access and circulation section with respect to the access points shown on the conceptual site layout, defining one as an access for the actual neighborhood and the secondary one as just a driveway entrance for a single lot. And then also, I'd like to add the, and you can speak with the applicant about this, but adding in a requirement that the engineering plans for the subdivision cannot be approved or accepted prior to the sewer issue being addressed by the city of Broken Arrow.
I have a question for staff. If you could help remind me during, the last time this was presented, this was just a straight zoning, right?
Yes.
And that was for a R4, R3?
RS4.
RS4. Thank you.
And that was denied at city council level.
Right. And I will say, all of these items are things that could be added to the PUD, so those items could be revised into the PUD document before this even goes to council, so that would be a part of this document.
Any other discussion? I guess we're ready for a motion.
Oh, yeah, what, I said you could speak to the applicant about the engineering condition. That is fair.
Thank you. Completely understand where you're coming from. What we would request is that no building permit could be issued until the sanitary sewer issue is addressed and affixed per, you know, city's requirements, but I would ask, at least for the engineering plans on our end, to be, you know, to go through, allow construction, but not any vertical construction to go up until the city is satisfied with the fix.
Well, and I'm glad you brought that, because I was going to mention, and then I forget all of a sudden, because it, I was thinking permit also, building permit, because I'm not sure about the engineering plans, because the PUD, if they don't do anything by a certain time, PUD expires, correct?
Yes, if they, if they don't plat the property within two years, the PUD would expire. I, I think that's fair to say, no, no home building permits could be issued. That way they could work on the grading and getting the drainage stuff taken care of, but there would be no actual active homes with sewer until that issue is.
Well, if they know engineering, then we know exactly what's going to happen.
Correct. And we're fine, yeah, we're fine with that.
Okay. So I'm going to change my language here just for our notes. So, no building permit.
So we're ready for a motion?
I'm sorry, I'm just going to say that RS4 and the need for the homes, yes, we have a need for these, these homes, these size homes, but when I look at the surrounding areas with the RS2, RS3, I just don't think it's conducive for that environment.
Well, I was, I'm willing to make a motion. I was going to make a motion to approve, but I don't have the notes. I would need to be spoon-fed the notes that.
Here, I wrote them out if you want to read it.
Yeah, unless I can, let me see, this is beautiful handwriting, but let's see if I can see.
There you go.
So I can read it this way. All right, ready for my motion? Make a motion to approve item 6A24 dash 1126 with recommended approval with the following items being added to the PUD. One, a fence being required along the south boundary, abutting the railroad right of way. Two, clarify the access and circulation section with respect to access points shown on the conceptual site layout. And three, no building permit can be issued prior to the sewer issues being addressed by the city of Broken Arrow, per staff recommendation.
So are you clear on the motion, then?
Yeah. Thank you, Amanda.
All right, I'll second the motion, so we have a motion and a second for approval. Have a real call vote.
Mindy Payne? Yes. Jonathan Townsend?
Yes.
Jay Lee Klimpa?
No.
J, sorry, Jason Cohen?
No.
Robert Goransson?
Yes. All right, motion carried, so that will go to city council on September 17th in this room at 6:30.
You will have to sign up ahead of time for city council, just like planning commission, so make sure you get there a little bit early.
And we will.
And make sure you sign the right, the right number of the one you want to talk to.
All right. While they're clearing the room, did we have any more forms for the next item?
I agree with you. But that's all right.
They could have stuck with the RS4.
Would you all like to take like a couple-minute recess for restroom break or anything, since it's already been an hour and a half?
That's right.
What was that?
Couple minutes for recess.
Y'all good hanging there, you want to take a break?
Five minutes, I'm fine.
Five minutes.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll, we'll come back in five minutes, we'll take a quick restroom break.
We'll get a cooking break. Have a good cooking.
Have a get your cookies.
We can do that.
All right, guys, if everybody can have a seat, we'll go ahead and get started here in just a second.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started, we'll, item number six B twenty-four dash one one three seven. Staff, who wish to present that?
Item number six B is a public hearing, consideration and possible action regarding BAZ sixteen twenty-four and PUD sixteen twenty-three, which is for Vin Park, currently zoned A one and R two to CM, community mixed use. This property is approximately ten point nine acres, level two and level three to level three, via conference of plan fifteen thirty-one, located one quarter mile north of Kenosha Street and one quarter mile east of North Elm Place, got confused there. This property is currently unplanted and undeveloped. Comp fifteen thirty-one was on planning commission agenda on June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four and August eighth, where it was approved, where it was recommended, approval was recommended to city council. This conference of plan change is a proposal to change the conference of plan designation from level two and level three to level three. Comp fifteen thirty-one was heard by city council on August twentieth, which was the Tuesday of this week. At the time of writing the staff report, this meeting was not, has not occurred yet. However, city council will have voted on the side and prior to the meeting as an update that was approved by city council with a five oh vote. BAZ sixteen twenty-four is in application to change the base zoning of this parcel to CM, community mixed use. PUD sixteen twenty-three, twenty twenty-four proposes a mixed use development with a variety of housing, including single family detached, single family attached, duplex, cottage court and some commercial aspects in the form of a live-work townhome style development. The PUD sets a maximum of ninety-five dwelling units with eighty-two being shown on the conceptual exhibit. CM allows for all of the proposed uses except for duplex and single family detached. It has been interpreted that these are lower intensity uses, which can be allowed by PUD sixteen twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Additionally, when looking at the commercial uses allowed in the live-work area, the commercial uses decreases the uses allowed by right or by specific use permit in the CM district. So to clarify that, that's just saying that the allowed uses in the CM district, this PUD does decrease those allowed uses. It does add in, it adds in short-term rentals type two. The reason that's not allowed is because type two is when you're renting out your entire house. In a traditional CM district, you would not have individual houses because you wouldn't have single family detached. So that's kind of the thought process there. The proposed PUD defines cottage court and live-work use categories, which were heavily influenced by the downtown residential overlay district. PUD sixteen twenty-three proposes different design standards for single family detached, single family attached, duplex, cottage court and live-work attached. These design standard are summarized in the following table. How to read this, okay, so I'm gonna try to make this make sense by summarizing this table. Basically, the lot size, the zoning ordinance has lot size for CM. CM, community mixed use is generally one large lot, so it's five acres for the entire parcel. In this PUD, they have done lot sizes for each individual lot that they are creating, as shown in the exhibit. The reason cottage courts has two different numbers there is because there's cottage court, there's a minimum for the entire cottage court, which is generally houses facing an indoor cottage, so there's ten thousand is the minimum for the court. Twelve hundred would be for each individual lot, because there will be individual lots facing a common courtyard. So those, that's why there's two numbers, that's continuous for that entire column. The frontage requirements are there, coverage setbacks, height and parking are all laid out with each of those individual building types. If you have any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer it. So continuing on, the primary access of this site is proposed to be off an extension of West Madison Street, which would pass through city-owned property currently being used as a regional detention facility. Secondary access is still being discussed with potentially gated access south onto North Circle Drive. Multiple options have been discussed for secondary fire access. These options include a potential path on the west of the detention facility, a connection onto Ash or a potential connection onto Oakland Place. These details have not been decided, but the development will be required to provide secondary access sufficient to meet the fire code requirements. A stub street is proposed to be developed to the undeveloped property to the north. The conceptual layout has been submitted with this application, is still subject to change. This layout has a public street that gives frontage to all proposed lots, except the cottage courts lot with cottage, cottage court lots, which can count the internal court as frontage, with additional access being provided from private alleys. The final layout will have to meet all requirements of the zoning ordinance, engineering design criteria and the international fire code. A community meeting was held on Friday, August second from four forty-five to five forty-five at the Broken Arrow Public Library, where modifications to the conceptual PUD were discussed. Some of these items addressed in the community meeting were fencing, landscaping and gating the southern access onto North Circle Drive. The PUD does require a thirty-foot landscape buffer along the south and eastern edges, planting one tree per fifty linear feet. In addition to a six-foot fence, the conceptual exhibit does show a gated access onto North Circle Drive. Section six point three point C of the subdivision regulations only allow gates to be installed on private streets. A variance to the subdivision regulation is being heard concurrently tonight, as well as the proposed PUD, which does state that the gated access onto the public street is allowed. That'll be in general business later tonight. To make that make sense, the subdivision regulations say all private streets cannot be gated, basically. According to FEMA National Flood Hazard Layer, this property is located outside of the hundred-year flood plain. Sanitary sewer and water are available from the city of Broken Arrow. Surrounding land uses are in your staff report. Based on the surrounding land uses and the conference of plan, staff recommends that BAZ sixteen twenty-four and PUD sixteen twenty-three be approved, subject to the property being platted. Happy to answer any questions if you have any.
All right, thanks, Henry. Any questions, discussion with the, I mean with the staff? All right, is applicant present? Do you have anything you wish to present?
Good evening, commissioners, my name is Jennifer Griffin, I'm the architect and urban designer on the project. The team that's here is Broken Arrow restored, or BA restored, Nick Parker and Jamie Parker, I'm sure you guys know them. You've seen this presentation before, so I know this is getting late tonight, we don't have to go through it, we're happy to talk through any of this. And actually, Henry and the staff did a really great job of kind of outlining our process so far and highlighted the neighborhood meeting. And had mentioned a number of things that we've integrated into PUD since we've last met with you to address both neighborhood concerns from the, you know, from the neighbors, as well as just, just point out, we've also been working with the city, obviously, part of this development, we don't own it, but there's a detention facility next door. Part of this is working with the city in the collaboration to beautify that and to turn it into a public park, as well as the detention facility. And so it will detain, but it will also become an amenity, which we will front onto. But in the process of doing that, the city has requested that we provide commercial access to the northern parcel to unlock the development that's going on up there and provide them with their secondary access, we are happy to do that. And so our commercial street that's on the west side of the property continues up to that. And the other request from the city was to keep all of the non-residential uses to the west, based on neighborhood feedback. And remember our previous plan, we had it on the east, so we moved that all to the west. And staff actually had some really good ideas of how to integrate that, so we were happy to collaborate and discuss that and do that with them, so. If you have any other questions about any of the PUD language, we're happy to answer them.
Well, I would, I know that, like, if you watched the council meeting the other day, and of course it came for it, do us before with the comp plan, but the, I guess the detention, like, really, we can't look at the details, because that's, I know that they're looking at it what, a public-private partnership-type thing, and so I don't know what's going on with that, but the drainage will be taken care of.
Right.
And I guess that there will be an agreement, some type of instrument written up on who maintains it and all that, so I don't know if the PUD is riding too much on that anyway, so. Just want to clarify that.
Yeah, any agreement for the detention pond and all that still needs to be hashed out with city council and city administration, so at this point, we're trying to get whether this project is viable before we jump into the details of all of that.
I know last time I thought it was a dry pond, I thought it was wet pond, but I guess a dry pond, it was designed as a dry pond, but it's actually been holding back and the Drainage Advisory Committee is gonna put fifty thousand towards redoing it and stuff like that, so I just want to make sure that, you know, that really doesn't have a bearing on what we're looking at.
And at this point, the fifty thousand is, and Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, is for a study to determine how the pond is functioning, whether it's at capacity, what needs to be done to it to get it up to capacity if it's not. So there's still a process to go through to actually make those changes once that study has been done.
But I did have a question about the access that's going around the pond on the west side, it's going to the north. What would be the requirements on the, on that road, because it's, it's actually for emergency access, right, or, so?
Yeah, that's what the proposed access is, or the proposed use is, from my understanding, it'd be twenty foot in width, seventy-five thousand ounce rating.
So it would be curb and gutter and all that?
It wouldn't be curb and gutter, I don't think Jason would.
Similar to what's being done in the innovation district.
So we, we do have a fire access lane standard, and it can be curb and gutter, it can be gravel, it can be anything but dirt, so.
But there's nothing that we see on that, but engineering is gonna work with that, on what they're gonna do on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
The design of that will have to be a conversation when we talk about the redesign of the pond. There are, we'll bring up, if you want, later in detail, but there are several different options for getting secondary fire access. That's one of them, so there's different ways that we could achieve that.
Yeah, I was just trying to clarify things that really, I'm not sure that it's pertinent to what we're talking about tonight, so that's another issue there, so. Any questions, applicant?
Nope.
Guess we'll get back to you in a second for rebuttal. All right, thanks. So I guess we have a list of people that want to talk?
I do.
We'll open the public hearing and listen to you.
So just like last time, I will read off those individuals who signed up, who did not wish to speak. I'll read off their names and whether they're in support or opposition. And then when I finish that, I got one comment turned out in to me, written comment, the individual couldn't be here. I think Henry has one that was emailed in as well, and then we'll call up everybody who signed up and wishes to speak one at a time.
Now, I will say this, for this one here, when, when, if you hear, you know, she's gonna read the list of names of the people that did not wish to speak. If you did wish to speak and you hear your name, raise your hand, so we can change it real quick.
Yep.
Thanks.
All right, Gail Fritz, in opposition, no pickleball courts, too much noise. Troy Jones, do, sorry, in opposition, I live on the corner of Thirty-first and Louisville, traffic is awful. Howard Butler, opposed to the high-density development. Cindy Watchhorn, I oppose pickleball courts, much prefer dog park. Chad Watchhorn, opposed placement of pickleball court. Diane Cannon, just opposes the rezoning. Lindsay Keller, opposed to the density of the new neighborhood, especially being squeezed into the busiest square mile in Broken Arrow. George Keller, opposed to density and height of structures in the development, does not fit in with the acreage. Rick and Renee Guyer, pickleball location off Ash Street, in opposition. Sandra Butler, overcrowding, in opposition. Benjamin Satchel, in opposition, with no comment. Stacy White, turned. Oh, that was from the other one, sorry.
Did they mark it down, Ron?
I'm assuming that. He's probably also in the opposition now.
No, no, he's probably for it.
They all put six B down, so.
Well, if they missed it, they're gonna have another opportunity at city council for the one previous to this one, this item.
Yeah, they wrote six B, but the address would suggest it's for the other item. Set that aside. Okay. Stacy White had written in, she is in opposition, Vin Park, I can't make this meeting, but I have concerns about the alleyway in the, in my backyard, possibly keep them more, oh, keep more trees and wildlife, and a wildlife study. Will you relocate the wildlife? I'm still strongly opposed to this project, this needs to be somewhere else in the city. Okay, and then those, oh, go ahead, Henry, and read your online comment.
We have Stephanie Bradley emailed in, she said, I have concerns regarding the Vin Park development. The parties have already shown themselves to speak from both sides, saying what seems to appease those with concerns. No true requests have been addressed, I repeat the concerns of the existing wildlife habitats, the extreme burden of the additional traffic, the possibility of rental properties by our beautiful, quiet, well-established neighborhood. Our peaceful pool in the backyard could possibly back up to who knows what. The trees, the little natural habitat is left on our side of town will be razed. Please consider selecting one of the many abandoned sites across the city for your development.
Okay.
So before we go ahead and read those, and I'm not trying, I'm not trying to bring something up to keep you from talking about this, but I do have, I want to bring up an item, and if you have to come back, one talked about the pickleball courts. Because I know, I know there's some that's out here concerned, because I remember seeing that last time and at the city council meeting, so. Of course, I play pickleball seven days a week, but I'm for it, but, but what I'm wondering is, is that something that really needs to be in the PUD itself? I mean, I, I don't know, I don't know if it needs to be locked in in the PUD.
Typically, we would see it, if it's not specified, it could say like open recreation space. And then anything that usually goes along with a neighborhood-type recreation would be permitted. In this case, they transparently said pickleball.
Well, I admit pickleball makes a lot of noise, and pickleball is a great thing, and it's, it's, you know, more and more people are playing and stuff, and it's a good draw. At one time, I think you were talking about opening up to the neighbors to play, and I think there was some discussion about, do you really want them in there? The H O A is gonna be responsible for taking into court, care of the nets and the pickleball. But if we put in the PUD, does that lock it in that that's what the use is for then?
Yeah, technically speaking, yes, so if they wanted to bring it back and turn it into a tennis court or a soccer field.
It's not specified in the language of the PUD.
But when we're, when we're talking to everybody and it's on the site plan and stuff, it's, to me, it's leaving everybody believe it's gonna be pickleball court. And I know there were some people concerned about the noise, so I'm just wondering if really that needs to be in the PUD, and that's something y'all could work out later.
Yeah, I mean, once again, it's, it's a conceptual site plan, our intent is to, as accurately as we can, represent what our intentions are as opposed to showing it as green space and then surprising everybody with pickleball courts that are going up, and they didn't have a chance to voice their concerns, that's, that's not our intent.
Yeah. Well, I have no problem leaving it in there, but I'm just wanting to make sure that that's the right thing to do.
Yeah, it's, it's shown in a reserve area, in that reserve area, the use of those areas can, can fluctuate. As part of our presentation, we called out some of the amenities that the neighborhood will have. Pickleball is, is one of those, one of those suggestions.
And it's not like you're the first one, I mean, others come in, you know, the pickleball court too, but I know there was a lot of resistance the last time, and then plus I heard a couple of things on here too, but I'd hate for that to be the thing to get you denied, just because, you know, you want to put pickleball courts up and people complain about the noise, and that, you know, does that make sense?
It, it does, yes, if there was verbiage in the PUD that specifically calls out pickleball courts, but.
Yeah, the only verbiage in the PUD is on the exhibit that specifically says pickleball.
Those look like three pickleball courts to me.
Well, on the exhibit, it does say pickleball.
It does say pickleball, it does, yeah.
Anyway, I just wanted to bring that up, so did y'all want to mention, talk about that any at all, or do you want to hear them first?
I mean, yeah, we can.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and let them talk first, so.
All right, so I'll call up the first person, and I'll also call up who is on deck, so you can be ready to go. Chris Newborough will be the first, and next up will be Brian Weinschlogger, I've learned how to say your name. Sure. All right, so Jamie.
Good evening, council members, my name is Chris Newborough, I live at eleven twenty North Circle Drive. I live at the corner going to the sub-street for Circle Drive, right into the neighborhood that maybe have a gate put on it possibly for emergency access. I am pleased that some people have paid attention to the traffic concerns we all brought forward last meeting. Have great concerns about the density of this project, the height of the buildings, looking down in our backyards, the flooding potential, the runoff. I realize, and I I realize and I hear that it's not in a hundred-year flood plan, but yet I've got a berm in my backyard, and when it rains heavy, all the way from the middle of my backyard into that property is solid water. I'm concerned about that. I think this is an ambitious plan. I would far greater like to see it stay single-family residential, not on a larger lot. I think this is reaching too far. I thank you all for your time.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you. All right, Jamie Weinschlager, and then Brian Weinschlager.
Hi, I'm Jamie Weinschlager with, at one-one-zero-two North Ash. This is the first time I spoke to you, so I'm just gonna make it quick. The pickleball courts is my huge concern. The house, that that property is, where the pickleball courts are, that house right above it is my house. Now, that property was never supposed to be sold. It's kind of a long, drawn-out story on how that strip did not make it with the house. That doesn't matter today. What matters is they're talking about building a community, trying to create this, this village or whatever, whatever, that's fine. I'm not gonna fight that. But what about our quality of life? What about our community that we've already built and we've been there? We've been there for a long time, since the fifties, that community has been there. And they're gonna throw a pickleball court that nobody wants, or something else that nobody wants, and take away our green space too? Because why? That's my concern. I'm not against the development. I don't like it because of many factors, the wildlife and different things, but I'm not against it in general. But leave my front yard alone. Leave their backyards alone. We don't want to look at it. We want our trees, we want our, we've even offered to buy that strip, whatever it takes. Thank you.
All right, Brian, and then up next will be Jerry Champion.
Brian Weinschlager, I've talked a few times, eleven-oh-two North Ash. Nick and I did talk the other night about, I told him I'd buy, I'd pay him cash for that strip of land. Just to end the problem that Kenwood has, the biggest problem that y'all have seen in all of the notes and everything, that the pickleball court is not in their proposed subdivision. They're plugging it right into the Kenwood neighborhood and forcing it down our throat. They're taking away seventy-five foot of my asphalt driveway on the south end of my house, which is, that's, that's ancient history. And then right behind John's house. And we brought this up in the last PUD, when it was just gonna be a road through there for emergency access. They changed it and said, well, okay, then we'll just throw a pickleball court in there. Well, that ain't any better than a road through there. But they haven't updated the PUD that's on file, and it still says a road going through there for emergency access. So what are they really doing if what they said and told us in the public conversation we had with them at the library and the, the couple different meetings here, they haven't edited anything. They've just edited the drawing. And I mean, I got other things, I'm not gonna get into that, but be a man of your word. I talked to architect buddies, developers, and builders that I know that have been building and everything in Broken Arrow for thirty years. They don't even know who BA restored is. Maybe it's just a, it's a different level of what they're doing. I, fifty-foot tall structures next to houses that are seventy years old, single stories, they don't match. The cosmetic, it's just, it's just, I wish them the best. They need to make as much money off the land as they can, and business is business at the end of the day. The storm retention system, and I didn't want to tell anybody this, because I honestly just wanted it to flood that stuff. But the storm retention system on North Ash, where Madison ties into North Ash, every time we get a heavy rainstorm, I've got four-foot of waterfront running through my front yard. Where they want to put these pickleball courts, which that water goes on to the neighbor to the west, that's his problem coming into his backyard because the storm system over here can't handle what's coming down Ash and Madison and meeting right there. So they're, they're, they got problems on their hands that they don't know. That's all I got. Thank y'all.
I will say this, Brian, that if I can call you Brian, I will say this, we, we were not in attendance to the meeting that y'all had, the engagement meeting with the applicant yourself, so.
Yeah, y'all weren't privy to that.
We have to go by what's presented tonight and what we have the app.
From the, from the previous time, yeah. Yeah, I completely understand that. I'm just saying the paperwork still says the same thing it said at the last PUD. And it was supposed to be modified, and it still says a road going through there.
See, the only thing that's come before us before was a comprehensive plan change, and that's what went through the city council also.
Right.
And this conceptual layout was provided too. So like I said, I don't know what was discussed at that meeting that y'all had. We appreciate that, so.
Staff, can you confirm that the actual road that's referenced is the one going to the south that'll be discussed later? Is the gate referenced? It's not referenced to the old one?
I think they're both referenced.
Yes, sir. So on the, on the exhibit, it does say that gated access on a north circle, but it does say in the verbiage of the PUD that if required by fire code, a connection to Ash could be made. If it, if it were to be made, it would be gated.
So it's not misrepresenting, sorry, it's not misrepresenting by saying a road is going to the west or east?
We, I don't want to speak for the applicant. I'll let them speak for themselves, but I do not think it's their intention to, they don't want to connect to Ash, but if that were required by the fire marshal, they wouldn't have a choice in that matter. But if that were to happen, it would be required to be gated.
So I either end up with pickleball or I end up with a road.
Was the original intent to put a road going into North Ash there?
That was the original exhibit.
Going like that or keep it from being landmarked?
Why don't we finish with the public comments, and then we'll let the applicant come up and rebut? Jerry?
Hello, I'm Jerry Champion. I'm a retired CPA. I'm currently the president of Kenwood Four Homeowners Association. I, we're mostly concerned about the water runoff. We're responsible for the retention pond on Circle Drive. Currently, we have a lot of water and debris, dirt mostly, every time it rains. It doesn't matter whether it's a hard rain or a soft rain. We get a lot of dirt comes off that property onto the Circle Drive. Circle Drive is not a good name for it. It starts off as a circle, comes around from Ash, comes up and does a dog leg into the property. So we've got kind of a cul-de-sac. It has circled, makes a right turn and then a left turn. We have a retention pond at eleven-oh-four, or eleven-hundred, I guess. Yeah, right there. There's a retention pond there that we're responsible for, that we have to pay to keep mode, and it is filling up quickly with the the soil that's washing off of that property. And so the natural drainage, we're getting it from the Ash area that comes down Kenwood, and then makes a corner and comes down our street and onto Circle Drive, plus the water that comes off and goes into our retention pond. And we're gonna have to spend a lot of money redigging that retention pond. So my, my purpose, what I want to communicate is that the developer of this development will have to do something to stop that water, because if we get an addition of water coming down that street, it's gonna be, and I'm talking about the street where you're talking about, the fire department bump gate would be. Okay? And then, since I represent that block of houses, neighbors there, all of them are against the noise of the pickleball, so.
So have you, so you're saying the existing pond right now that's in your area is, is silting in right now?
Yes, it is.
So have, so have y'all looked at, have y'all been looking at dredging it or anything?
Yes, we have. It's very, very expensive proposition, and we do not have the money, and it'll have to be an assessment to get it done.
Right.
So. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Next up's Claudia Taylor. I'm sorry, I forgot to give you a heads up. Wade Sewell will be next.
Thank you. I'm Claudia Taylor. I live at thirteen-oh-two North Ash Avenue. While I have several questions and concerns about the PUD under consideration, I would like to address this from a different point of view. Mainly the three parties that are involved. First, we have the developer who touts the building of community within a proposed development. While that may be true, let's be real. The bottom line for any developer is obtaining the highest return on his or her investment. Secondly, we have the planning commission and their staff who monitor and guide new developments, which will ultimately generate revenue for the city of Broken Arrow. To the members of this commission and staff, I sincerely thank you for listening. It's not an easy task. The third party is the residents of the Kenwood Hills addition, who have supported the city of Broken Arrow through their home ownership for the past fifty years. We, the homeowners on the west side of North Ash Avenue and the north side of North Circle Drive are being asked to sacrifice the privacy of our backyards, or in some cases, our front yard, to pickleball courts, a community swimming pool, and community center, and an alley with an unspecified surface. Currently, the subject homeowners have a view of a densely wooded area, which will be replaced with one tree every fifty feet. If North Ash was a flat surface or a flat street, the planned six-foot fence for the proposed development would mitigate some of the concerns of the proposed alley. However, North Ash Avenue is not a flat street, and for the homeowners who live on the hill, the privacy fence is of no value. The alley is probably something that we, the existing homeowners, are going to have to live with. But can the noisy pickleball courts and swimming pool not be relocated elsewhere in the development other than our backyards? I have no knowledge where you, the members of the commission, currently reside. I hope you live on a nice acreage with no problem with encroaching developments. But I would wager that if you were faced with having an alley running along your backyard, you would not be desirable. Finally, I'm well aware that money talks, and my comments are likely futile. But once again, thanks for listening. Thank you.
Thanks, Claudia.
Wade Sewell, and next up is Casey Sewell.
My name is Wade Sewell, and I live at one-two-one-four North Ash Avenue. And I back up to this development, and I have several concerns, but the one I want to talk to you about first is one I will deal with every single day. And they are right about the fence. You can't build one tall enough. So we are gonna rely on trees to keep the privacy down. One tree every fifty foot is a slap in the face to our privacy. There's more houses than there are trees. I have four, and you could say four and a half, just in my backyard, parallel my backyard. Not to mention a pool, that's next, but my biggest concern is privacy, and one tree out of every fifty foot is, is not enough. Not to mention, what kind of tree? Are we talking a pear tree? I think we need to know what type of tree. We need tall, tall trees. My lower part of my deck is sixteen foot higher than the back property, which is level with this community, sixteen foot. So the type of tree, it needs to be stated in the PUD, so we can know if that's gonna be good enough for privacy. And quantity of trees definitely needs to.
Just to let you know, when they submit a landscape plan, we have, the city has an ordinance that has a list of the trees they could select from, and they have small, large, medium, whatever size they are. And we have an approved list, and those will come before, if it's approved, they will come before the staff and planning commission with the landscape plan, so.
Yes, but as long as it's, he's saying there's no specified species of tree, which is.
Exactly, right, but there is a list that they could get it from.
Approved by the city, but there are varying sizes.
Right.
Okay. Well, also, I don't know if that is a part of what you're talking about as well. If, if lightning strikes that tree down, who's responsible to rebuild the privacy? We cannot build a tree on our back fence, because we have a easement of utilities that run our back lines. So we can't do anything about privacy unless we want it on our back patio. So I don't have enough time, so I'm gonna talk about the pool slash pickleball courts. The pickleball court, I'm also in the blast zone of the noise. If they're gonna put community money into that retention pond, isn't it a brilliant idea to move that to the retention pond park that the city is gonna build? The city of Broken Arrow, do we have pickleball courts for the rest of the city? This would be a great opportunity to add that to the conjoined development for the new park that is gonna happen. So that, there's, there's lots of extra stuff we can do with that pickleball court. In the pool, I mean, with twelve seconds left, there's not a single other spot in the whole development. We can't put a pool except for on three people's backyard visually, and you could hear it the whole block. Just something to think about with the noise issue. Thank you.
Casey Sewell, and next up is Don Stevens.
Hello, I'm Casey Sewell. I live at twelve-fourteen North Ash Avenue. Wade's my husband. He had a lot of really good points, as well as Claudia, so I'm probably gonna be repeating what you've heard a lot tonight, that one of our main concerns living along the east side of that property is having a pool right behind our backyard. We have three small children, excuse me. We have three small children. You know, children are mischievous. I keep a very, very tight watch on my children, but it's still a safety concern to have a pool directly behind our backyard. They've addressed the lighting issue. I guess they're not going to have lights late into the evening, but that was initially a concern too, having the pool lighting there. I would think that they would probably have some lighting along the back alley, because they have a back alley entrance into the homes, apparently. Which, okay. But that's gonna run right along our fence line as well. As they have mentioned, our home sits up on a hill. We look down into this property, so there's, there's no way to keep our privacy when they're having buildings that are three, four foot, I mean, three, four stories tall. I also don't understand that, but I don't know, just, I guess those are my concerns. I also don't understand that, but, um, I don't know, just, I guess those are my concerns. The pickleball courts and the pool, I don't understand why they can't be moved to the west side of the property, further away from an existing community that doesn't want them there. So, thank you.
All right, Don Stevens, and next up would be John Lindeman.
Hi, good morning, afternoon. Good to see you. Don Stevens, eleven oh four North Circle Drive. So, uh, I'm part of the HOA Association, uh, on Circle Drive and Kenwood, uh, four. And, uh, right now I back up, eleven oh four backs up to the business park, uh, Rose, uh, Industrial Park there. Uh, we had a lot of issues with that with water runoff, drainage, et cetera. I have a dry creek bed in my backyard because of the water runoff is still continuing. Uh, Mr. Parker's assured us that there's going to be a berm or underwater, uh, drainage for the stormwater. However, I just want to be assured that that's part of the PUD so that we, uh, it prevents any water continuing down, either coming down Circle Drive. Uh, we get everything up north. I said everything comes down, it eventually ends up in our detention pond. But, uh, my, I'm concerned about the backside, on the west side of my house and property, Jerry, and, um, the house north there. Uh, so anyway, uh, we need to be assured that we're not going to, this is not going to create more water damage in the area, uh, to, to our properties. The second thing I need to be assured of is that we've been assured, told that, um, now Circle Drive will become a limited access for the fire, uh, emergency. Uh, of course, uh, I just want to be sure that PUD can't be changed or eventually they're going to allow for, you know, that to be a regular street access into our subdivision, uh, and part of, um, the congestion there that we already, uh, faced with. And, uh, of course, you know, uh, enough been said about the pickleball, uh, making noise and sound. Uh, it is, uh, uh, quite an aggravation and interference with our peace and quiet neighborhood. There's one thing I think of that, uh, when I think of pickleball, other than the fact it's a metal racket against a, a plastic ball, is before I serve a ball, I got to call out the score. So eight, four, and, and the next time comes up, it's nine, four. And I'm shouting to the opposition, and that screaming and yelling for the score every time somebody serves, uh, is going to be heard by half the neighborhood. I think that would be, you know, unfair to our peace and, peace and quiet. So I'd like to see that all relocated. Uh, it's, uh, it's, uh, not, uh, we're not part of that, and, uh, that enjoyment should be for them only, and, uh, they need to deal with that in their, in their subdivision. Uh, other than that, I just want to be assured that all these things that we're expressing tonight are really considered to have reviewed and, um, voted on appropriately.
Can you hear the noise off the highway from where you're at, where you live?
You know, we do. We do get some, and we get, I mean, it, that, uh, we-
Have you heard more since they've cleared the trees?
It, it, it seems that way, and we, and off of Kenosha, we carry it to the, we carry it, I mean, off of Elm Street, we carry it from the west. So I think the more it clears, it's going to open up a lot, a lot more noise to us. And, uh, uh, now the birch, if we, if the access is open to birch, uh, I don't, that's slow traffic. I don't think there's going to be a lot of noise coming from that particularly, but, uh, it, yeah, I just, our concerns are keeping it from coming onto Ash, the traffic, or onto College Avenue. I mean, not College Avenue, uh, Circle Drive.
Yeah, I assumed you hear a lot of noise from the highway right there.
All right. Sorry, you have to be up at the mic or the sound system's not going to pick you guys up. Uh, John Lindeman is up next, and then Stephanie Bradley looks like the last person I was signed up.
Do I need to wait on this?
Uh, no, he's got it.
Okay. Uh, John Lindeman, twelve oh one North Kenwood Avenue. Uh, thank you again for the opportunity to speak. We're making a good habit out of this. Um, enjoyed, uh, the opportunity to be in front of you again tonight. I'll catch what my neighbor said back there. We can also hear Los Cabos. Um, so that's on the record now. To your point, uh, chairman, uh, I also play pickleball. I enjoy it. And you know, if you play on our public courts, they're always full. This is going to be a popular amenity. It's not something that will go unused, uh, really at any point during the year. Uh, yes, we can hear the highway. It's a white noise. I'd rather not have it. It's not intrusive. Uh, when I'm on my back patio, it's quiet. I hear the birds. It's beautiful. One of my neighbors said, "We hope that you all live on a nice parcel of land a long way from anywhere." In my backyard, it feels that way. I'm a long way from anywhere in the middle of downtown Broken Arrow, and it's beautiful. That's why we bought there. I understood when we bought the house, this parcel of the land would be developed. I assumed that that would be the case. Did not expect there to be a little panhandle in there that would get a pickleball court or a street or any other, uh, development like that, or at least I hoped that wouldn't be the case. During the city council meeting, the city manager noted, uh, that the beautification of that pond is going to be a great amenity, and I agree. I think it's going to be beautiful. It's going to be great for our entire community in that area. Walking trail, jogging trail, I'll use it. That'll be great. Um, I think that's going to be wonderful. Let's extend that PPP and put this pickleball thing over there because, as you know, chairman, all the pickleball courts are full, and we need more in our community because it is fun. It's also a long way from anybody, including their development. It's got a nice buffer. Okay, a couple of things that, that we talked about, what is allowed and required on the PUD. I'd, I'd ask for it to specifically be disallowed, that Circle Drive be installed without a gate, uh, that it would be required to have that. Also specifically disallow a connection into Ash, because that would put my neighbor and I on an island with roads on all four sides of us, and, and that would not be ideal. Okay. One of my neighbors noted, pickleball isn't just pickleball. It's people who sound a lot like this. And that's twenty feet off of my fence. It's not just the ball hit the racket. It's everybody making racket back there. That's all the time that I'll take. I appreciate your consideration in this. It will affect our lives every day.
You're saying that's twenty feet from your fence?
Yes, sir.
You got, you got a court out there somewhere?
No, he's saying if it goes in.
If it goes in.
The new one would be twenty feet. The edge of their, the south edge of their court would be twenty feet from the north edge of my fence.
What did that represent? What, what, what did that come from? Someplace it was twenty feet off from where that was recorded or what?
Sound of pickleball, for those that are not familiar, sir.
Oh, okay, I got it.
Yes, sir. Uh, I did not make that recording.
No, I didn't know if you were standing twenty feet away from another court somewhere else to-
I did not make that recording.
Got it.
Uh, general sample.
Got it.
Okay.
Now, I will say, and you probably know this, they got hush paddles out there, they got balls that are coming out, but I understand.
But not everybody's going to use that.
I know, and I understand exactly what you're saying, so.
I, I think it would be good to add, Commissioner Klimpa, last time we said "and" traffic, and this time we'll say "and pickleball." Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Bradley? Give us just a second. Get that pulled up.
To clarify, she was the emailer right at the beginning.
Oh, okay. So he already read your comment into the record?
Yeah, can I talk?
Okay.
Can I talk again?
Uh, you can. You signed up.
I'm not a talker in person, so thank you.
Wait.
Just excuse my nervousness. Um, I do still have a lot of questions. I haven't been able to make it to every meeting. I'm a teacher. I'm trying to go back to school.
What was your last name?
Stephanie Bradley, sorry.
Bradley.
Um, I'm tired and I'm hungry, so, excuse my crankiness too. Um, I have a lot of concerns. I know that my parents moved in when I was a little girl. That is the only house I've known as an, as a child. Um, it has always been quiet. It has always been home, peace. Broken Arrow to me is that. I grew up here. I went to school here, um, and I love that Broken Arrow has grown. I've seen it grown since I was born. But this isn't, this isn't Broken Arrow. I'm not sure what this is. We have a beautiful city. We have the chance to make this a beautiful area, but putting these small density homes all over Broken Arrow that don't look alike, they don't add to our community. Um, I feel like we're taking away from what we already have. I know that my parents' house, they were saying that the, the dirt is running off. We need piers. The whole, the whole side of that hill is moving, so there is a problem. It's not stable grounds. There are homes that are, have foundational cracks and things like that. I do worry about new construction going in and how that is going to affect current construction. Um, I am the one with the dogs in the neighborhood. I try to keep them from barking, but now you're saying that there's going to be cars coming in and out. I can't keep my dogs, you know, in the house at all times, but I want to respect my neighbors. I want to respect my community. But I need others to do that for us too. Um, I just hope that you'll reconsider this. Maybe have some larger, beautiful homes. That is Broken Arrow. That is our community. That is possible, I really do believe. Um, and not these odd, I think of this community down in Bayou Fullet. That's weird. We don't want a Carlton landing here. That is not our community. That is not Broken Arrow. We're more than that. So, thank you. I hope you consider everything that my neighbor said. They're amazing people that love this community, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, is that after, you wish to come out and rebut any of that, respond to any? I think you see now probably why I mentioned about the pickleball issue. I, I, I'm not saying that it might be an item that's dragging the feet in the wagon per se, but it might be.
Yeah, I mean, once again, we, our intention is not to misrepresent what, what we're wanting to build and what we feel like the community is, is longing for, whether it's the Kenwood Hills community or, or another one. But, um, yeah, like I said, there's, there's no verbiage in the PUD that specifically calls out the pickleball court. Um, it's in a reserve area, so if that use changes, I'm all for, for the record, what, um, Mrs. Burgen had, you know, hinted to the other night, uh, with the PPP agreement. I'm all for if the city, uh, would prefer to have pickleball courts. There's certainly plenty of area that I think could accommodate more courts than even what we're proposing.
But if they were to do that, and, and they did it through that PPP, that wouldn't be, that would be a public courts then, right? It would not be private, which-
That is a con, a whole other conversation that, that shouldn't be part of this conversation. Um, that's city property. It needs to go through the proper channels to even have that discussion, and this is not the forum for that. So I would not include that in your decision tonight.
I agree.
That's just too far up in the air right now.
Yeah. So, uh, Brian, forgive me, Brian, because I can't pronounce your last name either. Uh, Brian W. had hinted to integrity issues, uh, which I, I think any, anybody would take offense to. We've said exactly what we intend to do, uh, and that hasn't wavered. Uh, the reason that the verbiage for the connection to North Ash is in there is because of staff's recommendation. Because the road that's on the northwest side, that's shown on the northwest side of the pond, that hasn't been solidified with a commitment from the city. So in order for us to be able to meet fire code, if for some reason after the, uh, the study of the pond is done, that roadway can't be accommodated, then we still have another path forward through the North Ash connection. Is that what we want? Absolutely not, and we've said that from day one. That's not what we want at all. That's not what staff wants. But at this point, because we don't have a commitment from the city saying that that secondary fire access road will be there, um, we have essentially no other option other than to say that that is a possibility and it would allow the project to move forward. Once again, that's not what our, uh, preference would be.
Can I add to that too?
Sure.
Um, in the, in the PUD, it's, it says only if required and it would be gated, it's allowed to be gated. So it would be treated like, um, like the North Circle Drive connections, and no additional traffic would be going in there. And again, it would just be the twenty-foot requirement of, of roadway, roadway surface is, you know, has, we have some options with that as well. So, um, really, there's not going to be anybody using that other than fire, um, emergency vehicles, um, if it would go in. Um, and, and, uh, as Nick mentioned, we, we are looking at through a lot of different options. So there is the one, the road to the north of the pond that goes, um, but also potentially connecting.
Commissioner, we cannot hear.
Oh, sorry. Potentially connecting. Uh, we're looking at, I've said, we're looking at, um, multiple options for that secondary access. This, the one to Ash being our least favorable, uh, for us. Um, but, so in addition to the one, the road to the north and west of the pond, uh, we also put that stub street to the north. That's another property owner, but again, in, in good faith, we're trying to, um, provide that access to them. Working through, it's similar to the, the, the private, uh, public-private partnership. If we can get access to the north to connect up there to that street that goes out west, um, I think it's Oakland. Yeah, we'd like to do that as well. But again, uh, needing to work through that, needing to make sure this project's viable to be able to work, you know, spend the dollars and, and the bandwidth to be able to work through all that with, with folks. Um, and I just wanted to clarify too, the pickleball court locations, um, just to add context, um, because there were some dimensional standards, uh, mentioned, but they're currently shown in our master plan. We tried to move them north away from the south property line because we knew the noise was, the noise was a potential issue. Um, so there, um, that drawing is to scale. I don't have the dimensions scaled on there, but, um, it, it is going to be more than thirty feet from the south property line to the edge of the pickleball courts, and then from the edge, north edge of the pickleball courts to the actual house up above. Um, the two lots to the west, they're duplex lots. They're forty-five feet wide, shown in plans, so it's about ninety feet. So just to, so we were trying to place them right as far away from those folks as, as we could.
Now, where that pan, where the pickleball court is, that drive going to the house north, is that? I get, I guess that, that drive is on, on this, on your property right now, right?
The, uh-
And so they're going to have to relocate.
Brian has stated that multiple times. I've, I've driven out there. It hasn't stood out to me that it is, but if he's stating that it is, um, then obviously that-
Cause I thought there was actually two entrances to that property, uh, through the trees and then there is two. Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
So it's the one on the south end that's-
South end and the one directly from-
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
And so the one on the south end is going to be the one coming out?
Yep.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, yeah. We didn't, we didn't put it there. Um, obviously, it's been there for a while. Uh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to ask about the pool themselves. I know we could do a lot of landscaping around the pool. I mean, we have the one every fifty feet, whatever. There's things, even in your, your conceptual layout or the plan that you have right now, shows a lot of the trees there to block it, to-
Yeah.
But, uh, did you think about like switching that between that, uh, with the location and some, the cottage courts themselves just immediately west? Did you look at putting the pool maybe centralized or something away from the exterior perimeter?
We've, we've looked at that, um, and it's because of the layout and the alley accessibility to other properties. Uh, it, it wasn't, from our perspective, it wasn't a viable option. I, obviously, we're going to have their own opinion about that, but from, from our perspective, it, it didn't, uh, present a viable option. The other thing that it, it raised was a, an issue of the connectivity through the development because we don't have a street that cuts east to west in the middle of the, the houses. Uh, and we wanted that connectivity for a walkable community. Um, and so with that pool there, it essentially creates a, a stop point, uh, which we didn't want. We like the connectivity from the east side of the development to the west side of the development. So, um, there's been a lot of, a lot of care. Uh, there's been a lot of adjustment based off of, you know, feedback from, from neighbors, um, that has changed. Um, a lot of things. Going back to the tree planting, uh, code says that, you know, the requirement is that we have to have a tree every fifty feet. Um, we're certainly going to be in compliant with that. Our intention actually is to plant more than that, but we can't spell out specific intervals because the lots on that east property are different dimensions. Uh, and so we can plant one at fifty foot, and code also would say that we could put all fifty of those in the northwest, you know, thirty-seven feet-
Right.
And leave the south, however many feet, completely bare. It, the, it's, it's coming up with a, a quantity of trees based off of your property dimension.
Right.
Our intention, once again, is to place a tree at every shared property line on that east border to prevent sightlines from the Kenwood residents into the development in between the structures. Um, so, once again, we're, we're trying to restrict that access, if you will, or that, those vantage points. Uh, in, in regards to the fencing, that's something that we've spent a lot of time on. Um, and as, uh, as one of the gentlemen said, you know, his back porch is sixteen feet above, you know, our, our property that we're going to develop. There's not a whole lot that we can do to protect our residents and their privacy from the Kenwood residents having that vantage point. Um, other than the trees being strategically placed. The windows are, you know, strategically, strategically placed on the rear of the structure, once again, to hide those sightlines and to help provide privacy for our residents, just as much as we want to for theirs. Um, and so, you know, once again, as we looked at fencing, there's not a whole lot that we could do that would provide privacy for vantage points that are sixteen, twenty feet, twenty-five feet above, you know, where we're looking to mask. Uh, not anything that's, that's really- you know, where we're looking to mask. Not anything that's, that's really reasonable.
Right.
And so we're, our, once again, our intention is to do that with trees, either existing trees, if we're able to save them. We've talked with staff about what those requirements are and what the steps are, if we're able to save them, or new plantings, once again, that are placed at the shared property lines.
But you're right. We require one over fifty feet, and we also allow grouping together, too. So if you have to group around the swimming pool, that kind of hides it. But there, I guess there's one house right there in the middle of the east that would see the pool, and I guess the one north and south would see a little bit, too, I guess. The other ones, I'm not sure how much of an impact, maybe a little bit, the noise of the splash and hollering going on, so.
And, and we've talked through this, actually, it was for the comp plan amendment. But with, with regards to the pool, obviously noise ordinances, and it's written into the PUD, will be observed. Lighting for that, we have to have safety lighting in and around the pool, but it's not gonna be anything close to what you'd see up at the dealerships, which, once again, was referenced at a previous meeting. Our intent is not to, to light up the neighborhood. Our intent is to provide safety for the residents utilizing that amenity. And then, once the pool closes, because it's past hours, then those lights go off. There's still safety lights that, you know, surround the area, but it's not gonna be, you know, at the level that it would be when it's in operation.
I assume your pool's gonna be fenced in anyway.
Absolutely.
So on your east end, east side, are you, were you gonna put like a ten-foot chain, ten-foot, a ten-foot chain link fence there with some kind of cloth on it or something?
Around the pool?
Yeah, landscape fabric. You don't want to come out there.
It'll be some sort of obscure fence, yeah, or opaque, I think is the, the terminology.
And also, like I said, there'll also be a fence on the perimeter of the property. So just to address any concern about children.
But if you're sitting up high, you know, what we're talking about.
Yeah, it's more of an access thing. If anybody's concerned about children getting into the...
That was, that was raised before.
I just wanted to make sure that folks...
Children wandering and...
Yeah.
That's...
There'd be fences.
So in the PUD, once again, we called out the fence on, I think it was the southern and the, the eastern property lines. That fence was called out, not necessarily to provide privacy, because no matter what height we do, we're, it would be unlikely that we could achieve that. It's more to keep residents or to keep traffic from going back and forth between the two developments.
And I agree. And I was looking north of the pool and south of the pool. What would you different, do different there? In other words, to, you know, keep the noise from going over from the pool itself. I would treat that fencing maybe a little bit different, besides the perimeter fencing.
Let me clarify real quick for the audience. Opaque means you cannot see through it.
Yeah. So yes, we, we haven't gotten that far into the weeds in regards to specifics around the pool, but it will be, it will be shielded at a different level than what just the property boundary will be.
Do you have anything else? Have any questions, Apria?
I just, I just feel like there is another place that the pickleball courts could be placed. I'm not a pickleball aficionado like Chairman Goransson is, but...
It is what it is.
I would think that you could possibly put it at the property with the, as part of the amenities with the drainage. But, and make that a, a park.
Are you locked into having pickleball courts on the site? I mean, as you can tell, and of course, you've heard it before, it's a big issue right now.
Sure, sure. Which, once again, is one of the reasons why we didn't call out verbiage in the PUD, which is what's on the document today. Concept, conceptual site plans represent, once again, what our intention is to put in. We're not locked into having the pickleball courts onsite. I would say that our intention is to have pickleball courts as an amenity for the residents of this development. If that's on private property, if that's on public property, we're open to options. But I can't make commitments, obviously, outside of the property that we own. So it's, I don't know how far that conversation goes for tonight's sake.
Well, I'm not saying we're gonna approve it and recommend it to the city council tonight. But if we did, and we may, I don't know, but if we did, and it has a pickleball court, you're gonna hear the same thing going to the city council, being sure it goes before them, seventeenth, I believe it is, so. The third, actually. So it's moving pretty quick. But I could see where the pickleball courts is a big issue to the, those in opposition.
Yeah. Does, and this is just for, for my own understanding, but if that area were to be shown just as a reserve with no representation of how it's built out or developed, there would be nothing to prohibit the pickleball courts from being built down the road because there's no verbiage in the PUD that would specifically eliminate...
That was what I was getting at earlier. If, if this was denied based on the pickleball courts, that's, that's kind of sad, really. I mean, you think about it. But then again, that's what the, they, they don't want pickleball courts out there, and I can understand that.
I can, too.
If pickleball courts is not in there and it's a reserve, whatever, that's something y'all could work out later, if, if it is approved by the city council.
So if pickleball courts were not shown anywhere in the document, what Nick is saying is, yes, if they were to come in with a building permit, it says permits outdoor recreation in the reserve area, we would permit pickleball courts to be constructed. If you wanted to completely eliminate that possibility, you would have to specifically exclude that use in the PUD. That's the only way to get rid of them, as far as staff is...
I, I think them removing it like that, I, I think that, that takes away the good faith aspect of allowing them the opportunity to put it in later. So it's either there is no pickleball court, or it's presented to the city council with a pickleball court.
Or the pickleball court is moved elsewhere.
Yes, I, I would agree. Mr. Goransson, did you have any other questions for them, or?
Well, I was going to, but I think...
Oh, okay.
And I can clarify now. Right now, the pickleball is only mentioned in the PUD as an optional amenity. It doesn't say anywhere specifically that it is or is not allowed. It just has it listed as an optional amenity.
Right, but the drawing specifically calls out pickleball courts.
Yes, ma'am.
That's my corrects.
And that's the point I was getting a while ago, earlier in this meeting, is that it's shown on there listed. It may not be in the narrative, but it is on the exhibit, so.
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
No.
All right, thanks. Any other discussion?
Well, I was just, just gonna thank the gentleman that played the, the audio because I'd never seen pickleball play, or never played it, never heard it, never seen it played. So that, I, I appreciated that very brief audio that was shared to see just how it might sound. So thank you for that. I know it's extremely popular. I'm probably the only person in the room that hasn't seen it played or played it, so.
Well, I thought they used pickles.
So you haven't seen it played either. But it's very popular. I do, I do know it's very popular, but I haven't seen it or, or watched it played, so I wasn't sure how loud it was. I kept hearing people say how loud it was, and I was thinking tennis or badminton.
I do play seven days a week, and it, it is, it is noisy. And that's, I mean, a lot of communities, if you get on the internet and do a Google search, they're complaining about the noise. And of course, pickleball players, ah, you complain about, no, it, it does make noise. And I don't want that, I mean, if we recommend to the city council, I hate for pickleball to be the downfall of your, your project just because, you know, people complain about the noise, and it's a legitimate reason. But if you're willing to take out the pickleball, and that's what keeps it going, and the community's happy with it, that's a good thing, if that makes sense. I don't want that to be the hang-up. Were you gonna say something, Mindy?
Doesn't Rabbit Run to have a pickleball court in there?
Rabbit Run Estates, I think.
State, is it Estates?
Lakehead Rabbit Run.
Yeah.
Look at too many subdivisions. I couldn't tell you what amenities they have.
But I don't, I don't know if I would be...
And the houses around the pickleball are still for sale.
I, I don't know if I would be saying, thinking to make the motion to not have pickleball courts because they may be able to find some as they're going into more engineering on this design.
But with the PUD, it could be called out not to have it in that specific location.
You could specify that it can't be on the south or east...
Southeast.
Boundaries of the property abutting residential. You, you could add verbiage of that nature.
Do we also have that as called as a reserve, any reserve area, reserve B or C or anything like that?
It's, it's not given a reserve number at this point. We haven't had a conceptual plat or anything. We're not that far along. Were there any discussion items aside from pickleball?
That's the big, the big thought.
I guess we're ready for a motion.
The applicant is asking if he can...
Oh, the applicant, I could.
Speak to pickleball.
You'll have to put a microphone now. We gotta get you on record in case you say something wrong.
Like pickleball's played with pickles?
I thought, I thought it was.
So I think, to, to me, this goes without saying, but maybe it's, it's, it doesn't. Obviously, if we're gonna add additional screening to areas such as the pool because of additional noise, similar practices would be taken to buffer the sound. And once again, the placement of those shown on that, that sliver of land is intentionally placed because it puts those courts the furthest distance away from the structures that, that we're able to achieve. But once again, additional screening, fencing, landscape buffers, just foliage that would help buffer those sounds would certainly be applied to that. That being said, if that's the hang-up from planning of, yeah, we're, we're not gonna approve it if pickleball courts are shown there, we can find another location for, I mean, if, if, if that's the hang-up for the development, then the three pickleball courts can find another location.
Sadly, that seems to be what the case was, has been tonight.
And if you're putting them away from your structures,
Exactly.
the people aren't gonna want them near their structures either. Do you see what we're saying?
The, the principle, yes. The principle, yes. However, as we looked at this plot of land, we thought, you know what? How, how do we utilize this? We either can do a drive access, which the neighbors didn't want.
It has to go both ways.
Sure, sure.
Okay, I think I'll close the public hearing, and we'll go ahead and make a motion on this tonight, then. I think, I would like your staff recommendation one more time, and plus your, your thoughts on deletion of the pickleball courts or to move them or...
Henry, why don't you go ahead and read what was in the staff report?
Yes, ma'am. The staff recommendation is based on the surrounding land use and comprehensive plan. Staff recommends BAZ sixteen twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, and PUD sixteen twenty-three, twenty twenty-four be approved subject to the property being platted. In addition, if planning commission would like, you could say that if pickleball courts or other amenities are considered, they would have to be X feet away from the southern or eastern boundaries, if that was something you desire, just to, based on this comment, if you wanted.
Two options I've just been kind of typing out, and feel free to take or leave it. Pickleball courts being moved to the interior or west sides of the site and not along the south or east side of the development. Or you could also go the extreme route and say pickleball courts being expressly prohibited. Or any combination thereof. It's up to you all. I'm sorry, the public hearing is closed.
Nope.
We can't take comments from the audience at this point. It'll be up to planning commission for discussion.
Yeah. So we're, we're getting ready to make a motion on this, sir, so. So I, I don't know if I'm, I mean, I could go either way, but I'm not sure if prohibiting pickleball courts is the way to go. But if you could relocate it to...
Relocate.
I think relocate would probably be...
And if they could work up and, or work something with the city with the PPP, the private partnership thing, whatever it is, public-private partnership.
I'm not comfortable with putting that in the PUD.
I agree. I wouldn't put that. I would just say relocate to the central, locate or western side, maybe. But not as a location shown.
Yep.
But I hate for it to maybe be the showstopper on this one, really. It's too, should be easily resolved.
I agree. I got it. Okay, let's see.
West or central?
West or central.
West or central.
Central, locate, western, away, away from the eastern end, eastern end.
So make a motion.
Do you want what I have written as a...
Yes, please.
Yes, you can change it.
Come here. Bring it down.
As you see, we're trying to make this work for everybody, so.
Make a motion to recommend approval.
Yep. Yeah, bring the microphone.
Can't hear you, Mindy. You're too quiet.
Too short. You were supposed to do this.
Well, they're, they're thinking about something. While they're thinking about that, I would like to say something because I think you brought that up. There was talk about erosion. I think the erosion is, is existing from what I'm hearing, and that, that's really not a part of what we're talking about tonight, but that should be resolved if you're working with the city on that. I don't know what kind of erosion, what all's happening out there now, but what they're gonna do is not gonna increase runoff upstream or downstream, so. And there was one other item that somebody was talking about. I was gonna mention, I forgot what it was.
All right, are we ready for a motion, Mr. Chair?
Hit it.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve item six B with, with it being said that pickleball courts to be moved to the interior or the west of the site and not along the south and east side of the development, per staff recommendation.
And I'll second.
I'm most second. A roll call vote?
Mindy Payne?
Yes.
Jonathan Townsend?
Yes.
Jaylee Klimpa?
abstain.
Jason Cohen?
No.
Robert Goransson?
Yes. Now, that'll go before the city council on September third, right here in this room, and it'll be at six thirty.
And before you all get up to leave, the next item does have to do with the gate on North Circle Drive.
Yep.
Okay, the next item on agenda is item number seven, appeals, and then the next item is general commission business, eight A twenty-four dash one-one-three-eight.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair and commissioners, yeah, okay, we're on. We have consideration and possible action regarding a variance to section six point three point C point one of the subdivision regulations. This is for Vin Park, Zoned A one and R two, two CM, Community Mixed Use via BAZ sixteen twenty-four. This is approximately ten point nine acres, comprehensive plan level three via comp fifteen thirty-one. Vin Park is a subdivision which proposes to be serviced through public streets. The exhibit attached shows a connection onto North Circle Drive as the southern, at the southern edge of the property. This would be a public street connecting to a public street, which is not allowed by the subdivision regulations. Section six point, section six point three point C point one states that gates or any control devices shall be allowed only on private streets and public streets shall not be permitted, oh, shall only be permitted in a PUD subdivision. What that's saying is that gates are only allowed on private streets. Private streets are only allowed when explicitly in a PUD. This development is with a public street. So the applicant has expressed interest in leaving the road ungated to increase connectivity, but at the request of the neighborhood, they have agreed to allow this connection to be gated for emergency access only. PUD sixteen twenty-three would allow Vin Park to be a mixed-use development. This is comprised of up to ninety-five dwelling units, eighty-two, shown on the conceptual exhibit, and some commercial elements are allowed in the live-work townhouse style structures. If this street were left open, commercial traffic could access Kenosha through the existing residential neighborhood. Staff does not recommend allowing commercial traffic through residential areas. This is why staff is presenting, presenting this variance on behalf of the applicant to allow Vin Park to gate the access onto North Circle Drive. Therefore, staff recommends to approve the variance to section six point three point C point one of the subdivision regulations and allow Vin Park to gate the connection onto North Circle Drive. I'm open to answer any questions if you have any.
All right, thanks, Henry. Any questions, staff?
Yes, who would be financially responsible for the operation and maintenance of the gate?
That would have to be the HOA of Vin Park.
So what's gonna be a typical, our typical city emergency gate with a Knox box and all that on there, correct?
Yes, sir. That would all be required by fire code.
Okay. And the HOAs don't have access to the gate, correct?
They do not.
Okay.
Only emergency vehicles would have the access to that Knox box.
I say that before we get the applicant up here, because I don't want you to think that the, the, the applicant could open the gate and leave it open and just go to it. That, that's not the case. It's only gonna be open from the city for emergency situations, correct?
I can't say for sure that the property owner wouldn't have some access. You'd have to have at least some access if you needed to maintain or do, do stuff like that. But it would be, could be turned into code enforcement if it was left open, and it shouldn't be. Typically, that's not an issue we see, but I could not say for sure, and I wouldn't want to give you the impression that there's no way that the applicant would have access because they definitely could.
Well, I guess that's true.
Or the HOA, sorry, not just the applicant.
Trying to think how, because they changed that last year, I think it was, on how that was written up. I don't remember now. Anyway. So the applicant present, you have anything more to add on this? I don't think we have anybody signed up for this, but we heard some comments from the last item about the gate issue, too.
Yeah. Pickleball courts cannot go in place of the gate. No.
You know, we haven't voted yes on this.
No, so just in working with staff for this, if down the road, the Kenwood residents express interest to want this gate removed, would, would that be able to be done, and what would be the steps? would, would that be able to be done and what would be the steps that would be necessary? Once again, this would not be at, at the Vin, uh, directive, this would be at Kenwood because they're the ones who have expressed interest in it being gated.
And it would be a PUD amendment and it would have to go back before council to get them to approve it. Um, and public notification would be part of that.
To clarify that, the PUD just says that the gate is allowed, um, it does not require the gate to be there.
Okay, so not a PUD amendment, but it would have to go back before city council for them to say, yes, take the gate off.
Okay.
So they wouldn't go back before the planning commission, they go straight to the council then?
Correct.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
Okay. And once again, our, our intention would not be to remove the gate because they've expressed interest in it being there, but at some point down the road, if those sentiments were to change, we would want an avenue to appease their wishes.
So, and, so our two accesses would be off North Birch Avenue and then the.
Um, Madison.
On the west side, right?
Madison, which goes all the way out to, uh, Elm. Um, Birch is an option, doesn't meet the fire code distance requirement, so that's why we're working, um, with that kind of drive that goes around the pond or possibly out to Ash or possibly to the north. There's a lot of ways to do that, but.
But even if you put that gate up at North Circle Drive, you still have two accesses to the area anyway. So I don't know if you'd ever need.
No, but, once again, just because of the concerns expressed during the comp, uh, planning meetings of all of the, the exiting issues onto Kenosha from the Kenwood Hills subdivision, we, if this gate was not there, it would allow them other points of, of egress.
Right.
Through this development, they said, we don't care, we'd rather keep it like it is, which is fine. The only reason that this gate is going to be there, um, the, the only reason that the street is going to be connected, I should say, is because we're required to connect stub streets, which are present. This one, obviously, is present, so we've gotta put a road there anyway. We just aren't gonna have it where it's open.
And, and I think, you know, earlier I was thinking that this is something new, I guess, that, that we had in the plan, passing the planning commission, having that ruled on, like, waving a gate, it's gone before the city council, or not waving a gate, putting a gate in, it's gone before the city council and they've made the decision, put the gate. But staff's already looking at it, what the applicant's saying, and the neighbors, that we want to put the gate in. So that's what you're looking for, our position is to agree with staff's recommendation that there ought to be a gate there.
Yeah, and if this were, if this were strictly go, residential going to residential, staff would not be recommending the gate. Um, but since there is a commercial component to this, we agree that that could potentially have some issues. Um, generally speaking, our code does not permit gating public streets at all, ever. Um, so this is an exception to that rule, for sure.
And to Chairman Goransson's very first question of what would the process be to gate it, um, we said it would go to council but not planning commission. If you did wanna word this in a way that would require it to come back to planning commission and the recommendation it says allow the gated connection onto North Circle Drive, if you wanted that to say to require the gated connection onto North Circle Drive, then that would go through a planning commission to the council. So if you wanted to add that to the recommendation, you could.
You could add verbiage in there to say also if, you know, um, something along the lines of i- if the gate is to, it can be removed upon action by the planning commission or city council, if, if you wanna give yourselves a, you can always do that through the PUD modification process, which would require public notices and all that jazz.
I don't think that's necessary.
Before the planning commi, do I?
I don't think that's necessary.
Okay, but if it goes to the planning commission, you know, we have a public hearing, gives them a chance to talk and we also kinda help the city council out by filtering things through before it makes it to the city council, so. But it's whatever the commission wants to do on that, so.
Yeah.
You're in agreement with it though, right?
Mm-hmm.
All right, thanks.
Yeah.
Much pleasure.
So this is just basically, uh.
Letting them put the gate there.
Allowing a variance.
Mm-hmm, yeah, allowing the variance for the gate.
If there's no other comments, I'll make a recommendation to approve item eight A per staff recommendations.
I'll second the motion.
I have most second, I have roll call vote.
Mindy Payne?
Yes.
Jonathan Townsend?
Yes.
Jaylee Klimpa?
Abstain.
Jason Cohen?
Yes.
Robert Goransson?
Yes, that'll go before the city council on September third, also in this room, six thirty. Thanks. Next item on agenda is item number nine, remarks, inquiries.
Um, you all had asked about, um, environmental studies, getting someone to come in and give you training, still working on that, so wanted to let you know that I haven't forgot. Um, this probably wouldn't have been a great meeting to have another presentation at anyway, so I will.
And it doesn't have to be training, just kind of educate us, I mean, I was.
Yeah, okay, yep, just wanted to let you know I hadn't forgot about it and then. And then, um, I've reached out to a few of you about setting up.
Folks, if you could please be quiet as you exit, we are still conducting a meeting, thank you.
Thank you, good job.
Thank you. Um, I have reached out to several of you about setting up one-on-one meetings so we can just kinda go over different questions you've had. I've already met with one of you, um, so if you could reach back out, just, um, shoot me an email or send me a text, just what times you guys are available. I know a lot of you are Monday through Friday, eight to five, people like me, so, um, if we need to meet in the evening and go have a coffee or something, we can do that.
How do I get an eight to five job?
Yeah, I know, right?
Yeah, you're more like.
Eight twenty-seven, I think we're at eight to eight-thirty now.